Excuse me, do we have Councilmember Johnson zoomed in, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, thank you for that, Mayor. Councilmember Johnson is attending the meeting remotely. Councilmember Johnson, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you. And Councilmember Johnson, for your virtual participation tonight, can you please share with us which exception you'll be using under AB 2449?
I have a communicable disease.
Sorry to hear that, Councilmember Johnson. Glad to have you aboard remotely.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just turn to the city attorney for one second.
Yes, so that's under the just cause criteria, and so no vote is necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, go for it.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Halter?
Here.
Councilmember Campos?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Here.
And Mayor Schrader?
Here.
Seven members present, we do have a quorum.
Mr. Halter, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please stand and put your right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the beloved borders of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Onto special presentations. Business of the month, it is my honor to recognize Lynn and, holy mackerel, Maikas.
Mika- Miko-Tillis? Jerasi.
Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, my Greek is really bad, but I eat there a lot, is that better?
Is that like to see Jerry, Jerasi?
Oh, thank you. From the Greek Mediterranean Steak and Seafood, in celebration of their 30th anniversary, since Lynn and Maikas relocated and reopened their beloved restaurant in Ventura Harbor in 1994, the Greek has been a cherished part of our community, offering authentic tastes of Greece from a picturesque view reminiscent of the shores of the Greek island. The Greek has become a favorable destination for special events with a large waterfront patio and spacious indoor dining area that can accommodate groups of 50 to 150. Known for their exceptional Greek feast served family style, they offer a diverse menu that includes vegetarian, vegan, plant-based, gluten-free, keto-friendly options, all prepared from scratch in-house. From bridal showers to wedding receptions, the Greek provides a welcoming atmosphere and delicious food that bring people together regardless of their heritage. The family recipes from native island of Kefalonia?
Right.
Okay, I'm one for two. Combined with the freshest local catches have made the Greek a culinary gem. Their commitment to quality and tradition is evident in every dish, and their dedication to our community shines through their exceptional service and hospitality. Congratulations to the Greek on this remarkable milestone, and thank you for enriching our community for the past 30 years. With that, I'd like to extend my congratulations to both of our awardees and ask them to come forward for a group shot.
[applause]
Thank you so much.
location is so important, and we obviously made the wrong choice when we moved to Oxnard, but when we moved to Ventura and to the harbor, it definitely was the right place at the right time for us to succeed, and, you know, people said, gee, I always wanted a nice Greek restaurant, and I thought we were five minutes away, but thank you so much, and thank the Ventura Harbor for embracing us and helping us be here all these years. And most of you have been to the restaurant, so thank you very much. [applause] I'm going to have to get back to my catering, I'm catering by talent mixer tonight.
Thank you so much.
We have a 2024 Ventura County Fair presentation. Here to present the 2024 Ventura County Fair poster with theme of Fair Ever Young, celebrating their 150th anniversary of the fair is interim co-CEOs Heidi Ortiz and Dan Long and fair board director Betsy Chess.
Thank you, City Council, for letting us present the fair poster for 2024. We are so excited to be able to share some of the ways we are celebrating our fair's 150th anniversary. And you gave us a little introduction, so first, a lifelong county advocate, there she is, Betsy Chess, and she's also our livestock committee chair, so she's going to start off, and then Heidi will give some information, and I'll come back and do some more.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here tonight representing the fair. This is so exciting, this is my second fair as a member of the fair board. This year, our fair, the theme is Fair Ever Young, which you can, I think, see is so well presented, and the artwork was done by 11th grader Stephanie Garcia from Oxnard, and a judging panel including dignitaries, including our Mayor Schrader, made the decision, and this poster will be used on merchandise and fair programs and advertising and more. And also this year, as you know, it's our 150th fair anniversary, and so we revived a commemorative poster contest, which is open, and we had 45 adults enter, and Christian Ford was the winner, so we had wonderful community activities, so here's our fair poster, and we're thrilled to present it. Dan?
Yes, thank you for having us tonight. Just a little details of our fair this year. We run from Wednesday, July 31st, through Sunday, August 11th. Our times are noon all the way to midnight this year, except Tuesday is our Senior and Persons with Disabilities Day, we open at 11:00. If you haven't been for a while, if you haven't attended last year, you'll be amazed with all the reimagining and the new layouts that we have going on this year. We have a lot of new areas, so we think you'll be in for an exciting time. There are ways to save money, we do have promotions running every day, almost every day, starting with opening day, we have 3 Before 3, we have Youth Day on Friday, 12 and Under is free, we have 805 Day, which is, admission is 5 Before 5, Seniors and Persons with Disabilities Day, it's free for seniors and persons with disabilities all day, we have our Ventura County Credit Union Member Day, Military Appreciation Day, and First Responders Day, and then last but not least, we have Food Chair Day. We do have tickets on sale now, and tomorrow is our last day for pre-sale, so we encourage you to get online and buy some tickets. Some of the highlights that we have going on is we have a 12-day drone show every night at the fair, so there's going to be a little storyline, and so you'll have to follow along. We have elevated entertainment on our 805 stage, which is one of our secondary stages. We have 12 nights of tribute bands, starting at 9:00, and it goes till 10:30 every night. We do have a community photo wall, photos submitted by the community will be on display, and there's going to be more than 730 photos from the community. We do have a reimagined gardens area, where we're going to have a wine and craft booth area, we're going to have surf rodeo, a horseshoe lounge, and we're also going to have a Ferris wheel in there as well, and of course, all the lovely gardens. We do have, so between our two Quonset hut buildings, we usually have a big tent, but we're going to have that open this year, and it's going to be our patio area, so it's going to be an outdoor living, so it's kind of reimagined. Last but not least, one of the other highlights is our Lions Club is returning, but they're going to be doing something completely different, we're bringing back Bingo, so that's something that's new and exciting and everybody kind of missed, so we're happy to bring that back this year and partner with our Lions Club, so we look forward to having you out there.
Thank you, Heidi. So just full disclosure, I've been a volunteer at the fairgrounds for 35 years, and still a volunteer currently proudly serving as president of the fair board and interim co-CEO with Heidi. I've also brought, we have also brought new fair foundation pamphlets, we brought fair foundation pamphlets with us, and I think we've given them out to you. We didn't have a whole lot, but the foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization that helps us to raise money to complete infrastructure work at the fair. Anybody that lives near the ocean knows how much that takes to keep it up. I also brought some handy little cheat sheets, and there's some on the table over here that really has all the information some Heidi was just reading from, on two-sided page, and it's just really good, anybody I give those to just loves having it, it really gives you everything. So there's some of those I think we gave you as well, and some on the table. The Ventura County Fairgrounds is the largest entertainment venue in the county, and also serves as a sanctuary in times of need for both people and their livestock. I would be remiss if I did not mention that the fairgrounds does not receive any of your tax dollars. You support the fair and our ability to maintain the fairgrounds with your attendance at any one of our events all year long, and thank you for that. So I can take some questions if you have them, if not, we can, we do have a livestock committee meeting at 6:00 PM, so we will, excuse us, but we will be scooting out here.
Dan, Betsy, Heidi, thank you so much. I look forward, I go every year, I'm sure everybody else does too, so thank you so much.
Thank you for having us here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I forgot to mention that she's our fair liaison, I forgot to mention that, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we continue the special presentations with a proclamation for Disability Pride Month. Disability Pride Month is celebrated each year in July to honor the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1990. It's a landmark civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life. Disability Pride Month is a time to acknowledge the diverse contributions of individuals with disabilities in our community. Their talents, perspectives, and resilience enrich our society in countless ways. Our city, the city of San Buenaventura, reaffirms its commitment to creating an inclusive environment where individuals with disabilities can achieve their fullest potential. I encourage all residents of the city to join in celebrating the many contributions of individuals with disabilities and to work towards a more inclusive and accessible community for everyone. So I say, together, let's celebrate Disability Pride Month with pride and purpose. Let's honor the contributions of our disabled community members, and we commit to ensuring equity, inclusion, and accessibility for all. Now, on behalf of our entire city council, the mayor, the city management, I do hereby proclaim July as Disability Pride Month in the city of Ventura. We have here to accept this proclamation Dr. Maria Munjia and Carol Leisch from the Area Agency on Aging Disability Programs.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff, I'm Dr. Maria Munjia, current chair of the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging. It is a pleasure to be present for the proclamation of Disability Pride Month in Ventura, thank you so much. I'd like to mention a notable 2020 documentary film that is currently on Netflix called Crip Camp: A Disability Revolution. It is about a groundbreaking summer camp that galvanized a group of teens with disabilities to help build a movement forging a new path forward for equality. The executive producers were Michelle and Barack Obama, and I highly recommend it, it's called Crimp Camp. Thank you so very much. Carol?
Thank you for having us, also a member on the advisory council for, and I'm glad to help out, and even though the Americans with Disabilities Act passed in 1990, yes, there are a lot of structural changes, like for people who use wheelchairs, however, you can't legislate changing attitudes, and we still have a ways to go. So remember, it's important to view everybody as the same and to realize that we're all more similar than different. Thank you.
Closed session report, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, the city council met in closed session for the items listed on the agenda, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you much. City Council Communications. Is the queuing system working here?
There we go, try now.
Okay. Mr. McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to invite everybody out to the East Ventura Community Council meeting on Thursday night at 7:00, I believe, Mr. Herfer will be discussing some transportation issues, and you can find information on the East Ventura Community Council website and how to join that meeting. And then I will be joining, or I will be attending the League of California Cities Channel Chapter Dinner in Atascadero on Friday night, so in case anybody else wants to carpool. Thanks.
Councilmember Campos.
I think I have some slides, yes, thank you. There are several upcoming events or needs for all Ventura, not just the West Side. On July 24th, the Ventura County Public Defender is having a Fresh Start Legal Clinic, offering expungements, homeless court, and child support services while the parents are in the process and program, and I encourage everybody with those specific needs to take an opportunity to solve the issues. It will be held at 4601 Telephone Road in Suite 102 from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. The next slide, please. On the West Side of Ventura, we have our quarterly really, really free market, where everything is free. If you have things to give away, you can come at a quarter to 9:00 and start setting up. If you need anything, you can take a walk through Kellogg Park, where people have brought things to give away, and enjoy the atmosphere, the community, and usually there's a little breakfast there. Next slide. At 11:00 AM on Sunday, July 21st, the West End Daggers, who is a professional cornhole team, is going to hold a tournament as a fundraiser at Ventura Music Hall. Fundraiser will be for the goodwill employment and training programs for residents of the county. Starts at 11:00 AM, it'll probably run till 3:00, and everyone should have a good time there. There is a food vendor, but I don't remember who he is, so I left it off my slide. Next slide. The Community Outreach Center on the West Side is conducting right now a back-to-school fundraiser. We have approximately 500 schoolchildren in need of backpacks, shoes, and school supplies. Last year, 300 young people were served, and it was not nearly enough, so we're asking people to participate in any way they can. They can drop off backpacks, good-quality backpacks, new shoes for grades kindergarten through 12, and those are needed to be dropped off by July 29th. There's also a QR code on the flyer that's displayed, and there will be some around town and on the other side of town for people who want to just donate to the process. If you decided on giving a financial link, you can also mail checks to 110 North Olive Street, Suite H, which is the Community Outreach Center, or you can go to www.cocventura.org, and they have a link to the Community Outreach Center. And I believe that's it for tonight. That's just more information and another QR code. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. Ventura Police Department will be hosting Cones with a Cop at Coastal Cone at the harbor on Tuesday, July 23rd, from 2:00 to 3:30 PM at 1583 Spinnaker Drive. Additionally, like I mentioned last week, Ventura Police Department is hosting Additionally, like I mentioned last week, Ventura Police Department is hosting an e-bike community workshop. That's also on Tuesday, July 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30, and that'll be at the Ventura Police Headquarters, located at 1425 Dowell Drive. Additionally, our congressional representative, Salud Carvajal, will be hosting a town hall next week, July 24th, at 5:30, and it'll be a telephone town hall to share updates and answer questions from across the Central Coast. For more information or to sign up, you can go to carvajal.house.gov/townhall. And the Ventura Fire Department is inviting the community to join in the memorial stair climb on Saturday, September 7th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Crown Plaza, and this is a tribute to our 9/11 heroes. For more information or to register for that, you can visit venturafirefoundation.org. And lastly, I'd like to welcome to the city team Alexandra Caulfield, a new Admin Assistant in Public Works, and Emily Van London, Water Quality Specialist for Ventura Water. Thank you.
Councilmember Halter, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention a few things that have already occurred, and some of the fun things happening this summer is the Midtown Ventura Community Council had a meeting last Thursday night, where they focused largely on the land trust update and Mariano Ranch addition, and that was well-attended. I wanted to mention that you probably know a lot of people. He's very known in this community. Rob Van Newburgh celebrated his 80th birthday last week, and had a wonderful celebration for that. He's also been very involved with the college foundation, Ventura College Foundation, and Downtown Rotary. We had a Hope Committee meeting yesterday at 3:00 p.m. where we discussed things like tenants' rights and other things that you'd be hearing about at council. On this coming Thursday, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District will have their monthly meeting at the Gonzalez facility there in Oxnard, and if you look that up on our city calendar, you see exactly where it's at. If you're interested in Ventura Regional Sanitation activities, I find it actually very interesting to be a part of the representation from the city of Ventura. Beacon is Beach Erosion and Control. It's a fantastic group of people that's doing a lot of hard work, scientific work, to preserve our coastline. Our board meeting is Friday at 9:00 a.m. up at the Carpinteria City Hall. Some fun things that are happening, even more fun than all those I just described, is the music festival. The 29th season starts this July 25th through August 4th. The fair, as we just heard, is July 31st through August 11th, and the Ventura Botanical Gardens is doing a curation tasting in the gardens from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. on July 25th. Rubicon is doing kids musical theater. Camp students will be performing fiddler on the roof. It's going to be a performance not to miss. Get your tickets from 7:26 through 7:28, so not this weekend, but the following weekend. And then I'll be announcing on August 20th at Council Communications all the town hall meetings that we have planning for the fall time period. Probably every two weeks to talk about the issues that are important to us in the city of Ventura, and go over what the status is on many of those issues, and gather input, and get excited about working together towards a brighter future for our city in the coming years. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can the clerk please put up my slide?
Councilmember Johnson, apologies. I didn't receive a slide.
Oh, no.
Looks like we might have missed it.
Oh, no.
If you haven't, you should have the ability to share your screen if you'd like to.
Okay, yeah, give me one moment.
Otherwise, if you email it to me, I can put it up.
No, I've got it. Mayor, I don't... First off, I'm sorry. I'm sick. I have COVID, and I'm really not feeling great, so my apologies for not being there tonight, and I appreciate your forbearance as I struggle through this meeting. I don't recall if last time we met, if we had adjourned in memory of our former city manager, Ed McCombs. Mr. McCombs was the city manager for about 11 years, and one of the things he was responsible for was saving the building that is City Hall. And I apologize. I blanked, and I didn't look it up. Honestly, I slept all day, so...
Councilmember Johnson, I'll cover that. I have something here directly related to that, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. All right. And it's giving me a hard time here. Let's see.
There are questions here, Councilmember Johnson, about the monkey hanging from the wall behind you.
It's not a real monkey.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay. I cannot share my slide unless I quit and redo WebEx. Anyhow, I will just say them. These are my upcoming events. On Wednesday, July 24th, at 7:00 p.m., that is the College Area Community Council meeting. The agenda and the Zoom link are available at cacventura.com. On Thursday, August 1st, at 7:00 p.m., that'll be at Rincon Brewery there at the corner of Telegraph and Ashwood. Monday, August 5th, 3:00 p.m., Starbucks at Telegraph and Day. And there's no second Saturday cleanup in August. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Mr. Duran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that very much. I have the privilege of being on... Serve as a volunteer board member for Tender Life Maternity Home that's been around since 1985, and on July 27th at 8:30, they are going to have their annual fundraising walk. And it is... I will tell you, it is a home for unhoused pregnant women and their newborn babies. Tom Spence is going to be there as our emcee. Matt LeVere is going to be there to share a few words. We're going to have resident testimonies. It's a beautiful two-mile walk from Calorama all the way around the promenade. There's going to be a water station at Aloha Steakhouse, another water station at Piranos, and then back to Calorama and Thompson. It's going to be a super beautiful walk with an after-party afterwards, with a rock wall and a jolly jump, face paintings, slushies, and a whole bunch more. And I just wanted to invite our community to come and support Tender Life. Since 2018, we've had 49 babies born at Tender Life, who now have a shot, and mothers are learning to be the mothers they were created to be. And it's just a wonderful organization, and I hope everyone can come out and support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of former city manager, Ed McCombs. Ed was the city manager of Ventura for a decade, and among his many accomplishments was the preservation of the County Courthouse, or the new City Hall. Ed continued to serve us as a devoted Rotary member and involvement with the Ventura Port District. A celebration of his life will be held at the Poinsett Pavilion on August 18th at 2:00 p.m. If you want to contribute to his memory, the family suggests the Julian Goose Fund of the Rotary Club of Ventura, P.O. Box 2100, Ventura, California 93002, or the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Ventura at 1280 South Victoria Avenue. Making a transition now to an X Games update. Huge thank you to the X Games city staff, Visit Ventura, and all the partners and citizens for helping make the X Games a smooth, successful, and exciting event. While final stats are still coming in, we're thrilled to share some of the impressive numbers so far. X Game attendance was up 10%. Over 60 local news articles covered the event. More than 1,400 bikes were used in the bike valet. Over 18,000 fans used the city's free shuttle system. MetroLink ridership increased by over 300% on Saturday and over 100% on Sunday. A local vendor achieved three weeks' worth of sales in just two and a half days inside the event fence line. X Games donated 11,000 pounds of unused food to Food Share, creating over 9,000 meals for our community. Staff and athletes accounted for over 5,000 room nights and were looking forward to the final room night figures, including attendees. Overall, the event was a resounding success. We thank the X Games for leaving their mark on Ventura and love that Ventura is likewise a lasting part of the X Games. Here's a short video on the X Games, please.
X Games 2024, Ventura is the place to be.
One word: epic. I'm excited.
Welcome to the party.
Summer X Games, it doesn't get much better than this.
This is the greatest, this is for glory.
Wow. Tori Creed. Send it to the food.
Oh, my goodness, I finally did it.
Marcus Christopher.
This is unbelievable to see right now.
Redemption.
Yu Ito. Yes!
First career X Games gold at her first-ever X Games.
A 93 for Keegan Ballmer.
That's just what Kevin does.
Wow.
You know what it is.
Jackson Strong.
Oh, my goodness!
Arisa Tru.
The game done changed.
Brady Baker.
Ventura, back-to-back, baby, let's get it!
That was huge!
Hannah Roberts, the first-ever women's BMX park X Games gold.
This has to be one of the best, best tricks I've seen ever.
Yes!
Mighty Beryl 900.
Wow.
Ki Curry wins gold.
Moto doesn't care about the time.
Yeah!
One of the most extraordinary skateboarding moves in the world.
Yeah, I mean, who's gonna wait forever? I don't care, I wanna crown, I don't care if I gotta ruffle or some feathers.
The youngest competitor in the history of X Games wins gold.
I feel so happy.
Now we have fun.
Let's go!
Yumeka Oda.
Oh, that is what we wanted to see!
Oh!
What are you talking about? Top shark!
Wow!
Patrick Evans.
Oh, my gosh.
This complete and utter madness.
Kevin Peraza.
The flare whip!
Wow!
Over the box, backwards!
Arisa Tru.
Tech on display here.
Double gold, back-to-back year.
Is Nigel Houston about to make history?
15 gold medals?
The answer is yes.
Shout out X Games. We love y'all.
I still don't know how they do that. Marla, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. I originally came to support my mama, but I would gladly say a few words. First of all, thank you for your partnership. It could not have happened without the partnership of the city and all of your support and belief that we can make something so incredible happen in our small community. Your teams rocked it. I mean, the leadership meetings that you had on a regular basis, everything was seamless. It was really, really astounding. We have at least 10 skateboard athletes that were here three weeks ago competing in the Olympics in Paris. So they're all traveling right now to compete for our country, and they were here in Ventura, holding, biting, embracing their medals that said Ventura on them, and they will be mounted on walls, carried in private places, and just treasured forever, and we made that happen as a community. And we showed up, we had a plan, everybody worked the plan, and that's what made it work, so I'm grateful. Thank you very much.
Marla, there's no pressure on you. I know that these two fingers indicate the peace sign, but this represents I would love the X Games three years in a row and do a three-peat, so thank you so much. Your staff, you know, just kind of real briefly, I promise, everybody was worried about the parking, everybody was worried about traffic. We didn't have traffic problems. The people in town rode their bikes, 1,400 people in a bike valet. People came here via the MetroLink. That's just... It's fantastic. If events are really well-planned, they really... There's no impact on us. So thank you so much, Marla, for all the work that you and everybody on the city staff did. Thank you. Did Councilmember Johnson have a little?
Yes, Councilmember Johnson, I've got the slides, too. Whatever is easier, if you'd like me to put them up, or if you want to share, either way.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. I know I sent them later.
We'll go ahead and put them up, sure.
Thanks.
Okay, they're up in the room, and they'll hit the WebEx in just a second.
Okay, thank you. So there we go. I like having them... You know, I was a teacher, and so I like having them written down for people to look at. So Wednesday, July 24th, 7:00 p.m., College Area Community Council. Thursday, August 1st, 7:00 p.m., everybody's favorite, Rincon Brewery. Monday, August 5th, 3:00 p.m., Starbucks at Telegraph and Day. And again, no second Saturday cleanup in August. I will be out of the country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As a reminder, the city council nomination period for districts 2, 3, and 7 is now open, beginning this week, yesterday in fact, through August 9th. You can learn more about running for one of the open seats at the city's website, and there's plenty of information there for anyone interested in pursuing that. I'd also like to mention that recent local events remind me to share with anyone struggling with thoughts of self-harm that help is available around the clock through the 988 Crisis Lifeline. If you or someone you know needs help, please let the caring professionals at 988 make a difference. And Mayor, if I may, have Chief Schindler come up to speak to a number of questions we've had related to a recent Supreme Court ruling that affects a local approach to the homelessness crisis, as well as an update on e-bikes in the community.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council staff. Real quick, I want to just answer a couple of questions that I've been getting about e-bikes, electronic bikes, and I believe you have a slide, Michael, for that, hopefully. There we go. So we've done a lot, starting last year. We started putting out messages on social media, we've created flyers, created worksheets, informational, educational worksheets on e-bikes. This is something that kind of got thrown upon us without a lot of prior preparation. Basically, e-bikes come in three classes. The first two classes, minors are allowed to use e-bikes. For the third class, they have to have a license, basically. Minors have to wear helmets. But essentially, the issue is, this is a new dynamic, it's a new speedy bike, if I have no better word for it, that some of the kids in our community, more often kids, are taken advantage of, and quite honestly, there's been a lot of concern about safety, not only for them, but for the community in general. So we've been putting out periodically educational information, but what I wanted to call your attention to are two things we have come up. Deputy Mayor actually mentioned one of them. That's a workshop we're doing next week at the police department, July 23rd at 6:00 p.m. We're really hoping that we'll get some parents there, so we can start getting the word out to parents about these e-bikes. We're not saying the e-bikes are bad, we're just saying they need to be used responsibly, and quite often, they're not being used responsibly. Coming soon, you'll see, we have a workshop number two. We're hoping to do that around the beginning of the school year. We're going to work with the school district, actually, to do that, and hopefully get some more words out there. There's an editorial that'll be coming out. We're putting some stuff on the Auto Center billboard, but really trying to get the word out about e-bikes and warn people that if you're going to use them, please, especially for parents, please be cognizant that there's some rules, there's some safety issues, and quite honestly, we've seen not only some accidents, we've seen some other behavior that, while not directly related to the e-bikes, indirectly certainly is. It was highly publicized in social media about six weeks ago. We had four minors on e-bikes actually attack a homeless woman here on the west end of town. It was caught on video, at least part of it was caught on video. We made four arrests in that. We made a high-profile arrest. We served search warrants at each of the minors' homes, made contact with their parents. Each of them was arrested and cited out to juvenile authorities. Since then, we have seen a little bit of a reduction, but there's... Since then, we have seen a little bit of a reduction, but there's still cause for concern. I get it, I was a kid once, when I was a kid, it was skateboards. You know, so this is the new mechanism that we're seeing. So really, what we're trying to get out there is, hey, look, if your kids have an e-bike, please, please pay attention to what they're doing, come to our workshop, learn more. There's a link on there for City of Ventura e-bikes, the top line. If you go to that webpage, it's the Ventura Police Department webpage, dedicated solely to e-bikes. It defines the different classifications for each of the bikes, it also tells you some of the speed limits, helmets, rules, et cetera. Lastly, when it comes to e-bikes, we have been doing enforcement. We try to use enforcement on a measured basis. In other words, we try to educate the kids that are riding these bikes, we try to educate their parents. The last thing my officers want to do is stop kids and give them tickets for these things. So we're really looking for compliance. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't get compliance. As you can imagine, these things are pretty quick, they'll go up to 28 and over miles an hour. They run from my officers on these e-bikes, and the last thing I want is my officers chasing these kids through town on these bikes, creating more of a hazard. So what we do is, when we identify them, we go to their house, we make contact with their parents, and we also educate them. We have impounded e-bikes, when the kids do not listen to us, or when they run from us and we subsequently catch them, we impound their e-bikes. And their parents have to come pick them up, and that's another opportunity for us to educate the parents. So in a nutshell, that's what's happening with e-bikes. I know there's probably a lot of people in the community that have questions. Probably the best thing to do is go to our workshop, we're gonna have two or three of our motor officers, our traffic officers, at the workshops. One of them recently did a podcast, that podcast will be coming out soon, probably the next week or two. He is, for lack of a better word, expert on these devices, and he can answer any question that a parent or anybody else might have.
Thanks, Chief.
Got it. I have one more update on the Grants Pass decision that I'd like to update you on. So Grants Pass, long story short, this was a decision that came out of the Ninth Circuit in 2018, and it had to do with criminalizing camping or sleeping in public. The Ninth Circuit is the appeals court that affects California, so it affected us, and took away a tool that we had. And that tool was, we have municipal code for camping or sleeping in public. When we encountered individuals who did not want to listen to us when we asked them to move along, it was a tool for us to issue a citation if they were non-compliant. And we issued so many citations in a certain amount of period, typically five and six months, we would then make an arrest. We lost that tool in 2018 because of this decision. So the Supreme Court took it up, and a few weeks ago, they actually reversed that decision. So that's a good thing for the City of Ventura and all the cities in California. What I want to get out there is, this is not going to change dramatically our approach to what you know is a complex issue, homelessness and vagrancy. My direction to my officers is still, whenever possible, assistance. Try to get assistance, direct these individuals into assistance, whether it's a shelter or some kind of other social services. I don't think we're gonna see a big increase in enforcement, but now that we have this tool, we will probably see some enforcement for the few that don't want to obey or abide by the officers in the city's municipal code. We don't have a real big problem with this in our parks, we have a really good ordinance that does not allow people to be in parks after dark. Where we typically see this in the City of Ventura is the beaches, parking lots, parking structures, and vehicles on public roadways. So where I see us seeing more complaints and responding to more complaints are gonna be those areas. We're gonna issue warnings, everybody will get a warning before any enforcement, we'll document that warning, we'll try to reach them out to services, whether it's social services, et cetera. And subsequent violations, the officer will have discretion to write an enforcement citation for municipal code. Now, obviously, homeless individuals typically don't have the resources to pay, you know, a citation, so that's not gonna solve the problem, most likely. We're gonna do our best to not enforce the municipal code, but in those situations where we have to, we will. And that's all I have, unless you have anything else for me.
Questions from anybody on council? Thank you, that clears up a lot.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, just my final remarks, I'd like to note that there is a meeting of the council for training on August 16th, followed by the next business meeting of the council on August 20th, and there will be another meeting in August on the 27th. And that concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to consent items. So we have 11 consent items on our agenda tonight. Are there questions, comments, or requests to have items pulled? Mr. McReynolds?
Yes, I'd like to get item 11 pulled, I'd like to get an overview of what's being awarded.
Okay, item 11. Any other items? Councilmember Compos?
I just have a question or two on number eight.
Number eight, question. Anything else? Councilmember Johnson? Nothing? Okay.
I'm looking forward to 11, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Comments on number eight? Ms. Compos?
Is the, is the person who prepared the presentation available on number eight? Yeah.
Good evening again, council. Our emergency services manager, Mac Douglas, will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Douglas, thank you for all your work on this and the evacuation plan. Clearly, this will be a busy meeting for you. I don't have any problems with what you're doing with this, this is a very good process for the unsheltered people who will be confronted with emergencies. Except that, being familiar with a lot of the people who live in the river bottom and on the west side, I've encountered several who cannot read. So I noticed that you're printing brochures for them, and I would ask that you find a way to put a pictograph with each item in the brochure, or some way that we know that everybody's being reached. I don't know if you already have a plan for that, if you could.
Councilmember, that's an excellent suggestion, and to, we're going to do our best to make sure that that brochure is bilingual and that it has clearly understood pictograms on it. And then we'll also do our best to, when we're out, conducting, you know, interfaces with these folks, we'll do our best to explain in a way that they can understand what it is that we're trying to get across.
Thank you very much.
This will not be a drop and run type operation.
Thank you, that was my question.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mac. Number 11. Mr. McReynolds?
I was just looking for a larger overview of exactly what's being awarded and the work that's gonna be done, as part of that.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Schrader and Councilmember McReynolds, my name is Charlie Ebling, I'm your Public Works Director, I certainly can give you a little bit of an overview on the project that's being proposed. This is a resurfacing project, a pavement project, that will improve North Bank Drive, Navigator Drive, and Anchors Way, oh, and Valentine Drive, a road. We put the plan out for advertisement, for bidding, about a month ago. We knew we had three plant holders, three construction companies looked at it, but ultimately, we only had one bidder, Toro Enterprise of Oxnard, California. The low bid amount was $3,102,915, and we put a 10% contingency on that of $310,292, for a total of a not-to-exceed amount of $3,413,207. The engineer's estimate was $2 million, so that was significantly more than the engineer's estimate, and we can get into a little bit why that occurred, why we think that occurred. We will be using rubberized asphalt concrete, which is a type of asphalt that uses shredded tires, so it's a great use of reusing old tires. The project will include adjacent ADA improvements and sidewalk repairs, so there is a portion of the dollar amount that goes to concrete repairs and improving sidewalks. The roadways will also be restriped, and we'll be doing some improvements to bicycle lanes and adding striped crosswalks. The approximate schedule will be that we intend to start construction in about October of this year, and then wrap up construction in March of 2025. We always do a lot of preparatory work with the contractor before they can actually start construction, which includes their submittals for things like stormwater pollution prevention plans, materials, submittals, things like that, so it takes us a little while to get the project started. And then, one important aspect is our public outreach, well, we will be doing mailers to adjacent residents and businesses, and then also going out there and working with those residents and businesses before the contract starts, actually. In terms of the bid itself, and being significantly over the engineer's estimate, I think we're looking at two areas of our analysis of the bid. One was that the contractor bid relatively high for traffic control and mobilization, which is a little unusual, but we asked them about that, and it's a time of year, they're very scheduled, so they had to compete with their subcontractors to get them to bid on this project. Also, our materials cost is going up, and one of the things we're having an issue with more recently, and will affect some smaller pavement projects that we're intended to deliver in the next couple of months, is materials availability. So we are having a little bit of a struggle scheduling when we're getting our asphalt concrete from the batch plants. And of course, with that struggle of getting the materials, material cost goes up significantly also. So there are some reasons, including just the overall inflation that's happening with construction cost, and we will be looking at this bid analysis very carefully and adjusting our next engineer's estimates as we go forward.
One question regarding the North Bank improvement, so I'm sure everybody has an opinion on what the worst section of road is, that's probably in my top 10. So are we gonna be closing the off-ramp for Johnson Drive when that gets done, or how does that actually?
Mayor Schrader.
As a follow-up, are you taking it back down to what I'm gonna call base, and then rebuilding it, or, and again, this is just on the North Bank section.
Sure. Mayor Schrader, Councilmember McReynolds, we will be having to close the off-ramp there during the paving periods, when they grind, and then when they overlay. We'll be looking at how we schedule that with the contractor, it could end up being at night. We also have to get an encroachment permit from Caltrans to be able to do that, so we've done the initial work of getting the encroachment permit, but we also rely on the contractor to get the final encroachment permit with Caltrans. In terms of the overlay itself, it is just an overlay, it's not a reconstruct, so it's not a full-depth reconstruct going down 16 or 18 inches, this is just like a four-inch overlay of that section. So it is a good overlay, but it is not, it didn't need a full reconstruct.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ebling, the, why was, why were all these projects loaded up into one RFP?
Mayor Schrader, Councilmember Johnson, not having been here when this was preordained, I'll speak in generalities, that we try to combine enough roadways into a project to work within our budget, but also get some economies of scale. So we want to get enough pavement done at once where we're getting good prices, but at the same time, we do have to work within a set budget, so it's kind of a balancing act, but that's kind of how we look at it.
Thank you, but, you know, economies of scale are one thing, but at the same time, we only had one bid on this. Do you think we might have had more bids if this had been broken down into perhaps two projects, or three, or four?
Mayor Schrader, Councilmember Johnson, actually, I would have thought the opposite. The more we can combine into a project, the larger the project that we put on the street, the more likely that we'll get multiple bidders, because they're looking at a larger dollar amount that they can commit to and commit their forces to. Sometimes, small projects are actually much harder to get bidders to look at. In the realm of pavement projects for a city of Ventura's size, it's actually a relatively small project. So I think that was one of the aspects of why our bid was high, and also that we only received one actual bid. So larger's probably better, actually.
Thank you. And last, as I wrote to you, you know, I serve as the chair on Bold Coast Transit, and one of the things we do is, in a situation like this, where you have three firms that initially express interest and then only one bids, is we go back and we talk to the two that sort of dropped out to find out why. Do we do that at all at the City of Ventura?
Mayor Schrader, Councilmember Johnson, absolutely, we do do that, and also, being a relatively new Public Works Director for the city, I intend to meet with a lot of the local contractors and find out a little bit more about the bidding environment, the working with the City of Ventura, if there's any issues that happen to be there, that kind of thing. So absolutely, we do that, and in this instance, being relatively new, I'd like to do that in particular.
Well, I greatly appreciate that. For my colleagues, you know, I haven't really talked a whole lot about this, but a lot of Southern California cities, when they were looking for consultants for their housing element, one of the housing element firms, you know, told the South Pasadena City Council that they all got together and decided which of the three big firms would put in bids to do housing elements for different cities. And so we've always got to make sure, when there's only one bid, that we feel confident that everything was good. I appreciate all the work that Public Works is doing, I have no reason to believe that there's anything going on with Toro Enterprises or anything, just, you know, as a general rule, it would make sense, whenever we have a situation like this with a big contract and there's only one bid, that we really make sure that we're looking out for the taxpayers' interests. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Do we have comments?
I'm sorry, public comments?
Thank you, Mayor, we have one speaker on consent items, Spencer Noran, 1, 4, and 5. Oh, and 11, excuse me, I thought 11 was getting pulled, you're right, 1, 4, 5, and 11.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate your hard work. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, I mean, VPD for being here, translation in the back, appreciate you translating my words in Spanish. I wanted to get into my consent, I have three minutes total, right, Michael?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Item number one on consent is talking about litigations about a trip and fall for $200,000. I just wanted to be proactively asking staff to go and try to fix some of these things proactively. And I went out today and I fixed one of them on Loma Vista, took about an hour and a half, actually, it was yesterday now, and I took a whole truckload of mulch from a spot in the city where they just piled the mulch up, I filled the pickup truck up, and I went and filled the whole tree well with mulch. It was about four or five inches, the whole thing. The trees are across the street from the college. It's one example of, I think, things that we can look to emit litigation, $200,000 for litigation. Of course, my thoughts are with the resident that got injured, but what are we doing every day to stop things like this from happening? And this sidewalk is a good example, and it's not the tree's fault, it's actually been probably a lack of maintenance over the last 10 or 15 years. So if we could look into that proactively, I'd be appreciative. I wanted to number four, and I wanted to give a big shout-out to the Ventura Police Department on two of these, actually, we, 4 and 5. 4, starting with the fair. I wanted to note the hard work of the Ventura Police Department, and looking at the Ventura County Fair, I missed the presentation earlier, but it's a collaboration between the county. Are all city police departments and the county sheriff's department putting in the same type of effort that we are? I understand that we're the whole city, but one of the biggest complaints I get throughout the police department right now is the overworked, the overtime, and the stress we have on our staff. So my question ultimately, in funding this project through the county who's paying for it, does it put more stress on our police department that's unnecessary if other cities in the county could contribute? Something I like to look at, because it talks about overtime in this, the less overtime for my police department, the better. I also wanted to get into, where are we at, number 11? Oh, it was construction. I saw Spinnaker Drive on here, I wanted to let everyone know again, this is not the part of Spinnaker that the whole community is hoping gets paved. This is the part of Spinnaker that was kind of tore up through the Ventura Water Project and other areas. Johnson Drive's been on the books for a long time. New projects that are faster speed, especially going into Spinnaker. A lot of people saw Spinnaker on this, thought it was the one going to, of course, the National Park, it wasn't unfortunately. Michael, what was my last number there?
11.
Ooh, before that, 7?
11.
11.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment on consent items.
Yep, I'm sorry, do I have a motion on consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Vote, please, Mr. City Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will do a roll call vote for the evening, and we do have a motion on the floor on the second to approve the consent items. Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you much. Onto a public hearing, item number 12, resolution declaring results of majority protest proceeding. Resolution and resolution to review the Ventura County Coast Tourism Business Improvement District and levy the assessment on lodging business.
That's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, executive leadership. My name is Carrie Glenn. I'm Management Analyst in Economic Development.
One second, Carrie. Have we met all the requirements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this item has been adequately noticed.
Okay, then we'll open the public hearing. I'm sorry.
No worries. Appreciate it. Thank you. So tonight is our third and final appearance before City Council regarding the renewal of the VCT bid. As you recall, on May 7th, Council adopted the resolution of intention. On June 4th, we opened the public comment, and tonight, we're requesting that we close the public comment and then recommend Council adopt the resolution of formation. So we don't have a formal presentation tonight, but myself and our partners at the Ventura County Lodging Association and their consultant are here if you have any final questions before you take your vote tonight.
City Council, comments and questions? We've seen this more than once. Public comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two public comment cards received on item number 12. Our first speaker is Marla Soster, followed by Spencer Noran, and speakers will have three minutes. And apologies, we were having difficulty getting the timer up on the screen before it might work this time. If not, it is on the middle timer. Go ahead, Marla.
Great, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. It was just a bonus that VCLA was on as public hearing this evening. I did want to share my support for all the work that the Ventura County Lodging Association does. They are great partners. I have had the pleasure of serving on the board for 12 years, and I can attest to us being able to do things together that we cannot do alone. And I was remiss in not mentioning them as a key partner in the X Games. From the moment I brought it up back in 2019, they were all in of let's make this happen because what benefits Ventura and it being within the city limits of Ventura benefits us all in Ventura County Lodging Association, and that mentality has rung through from the beginning. So I'm grateful and I just want to share my support for all the great things they do for us and our neighbors because it's not often that you can work collaboratively with neighbors. So thank you.
Mr. Noran, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, VPD, translation. I wanted to just note, looking over this agenda item, the length of the agreement, it looks like 10 years from 2025 to 2035. And with the cost of living continuing to increase, Ventura County believes to be the highest in the county from what I've heard, I'm thinking about the possibility of visiting here, how it becomes more expensive, especially for our family members coming to visit us. So as the cost continues to increase, why such the lengthy period of the agreement? So has Council looked into that, a two-year, a five-year, a 10-year? 10-year seems like a long time to put ourselves into another taxation. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on item number 12.
Back to the City Council for final questions. If there's no more questions, I'll close the public hearing. Council deliberation, a motion is required.
I'd like to make, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no.
I'd like to make a motion for staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I have a comment as well.
Go ahead with the comment.
The comment is just that I think the Tourism Bureau in this Ventura County Coast Tourist Business Improvement District is a perfect example of how we could leverage funds and exponentially get a return on it. And I could see with the length of time that is being allowed, larger, more complex projects can be handled, and so I'm very excited that we're taking this step and I wholeheartedly support this project.
Anybody else?
Me.
I'll close, excuse me, oh, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. I also am in support of this motion, just to explain to everybody, this isn't a tax that we're imposing on anybody. This is, these are the members of the Lodging Association that have voted to do this, they've agreed to do this. This is what they want to do. And it's, again, it's going back to Mr. Ebbling's discussion about economies of scale, having everybody collaborate and cooperate really benefits the entire county. And I want to thank Ms. Soster in particular for all the work she has done to make sure that we all understand that there are sometimes tides that help lift all boats, and this is one of those instances. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll now close the public hearing. I need a motion, I have a motion. Vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the staff recommendation. Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Congratulations on that. I'm on to formal item number 13, evacuation plan adoption.
Sure. Deputy V, again, Mayor, Deputy Bureau of Council and Staff. It's my pleasure to present or introduce our emergency services manager, Mac Douglas, once again, and Assistant Chief Rick Murray. They're going to present the much anticipated evacuation plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. I'm Mac Douglas, your emergency services manager. I'm here to share the highlights of the city's.
Evacuation plan. Thank you. I'll start by explaining the driving force behind this project. Some of the geography that makes Ventura a great place to live also poses a potential hazard to life and property. The Pacific bounds us to the west, coastal foothills are to the east, and we have rivers prone to flooding to the north and south. The challenges faced during evacuations related to the Thomas Fire put this into crystal-clear focus for many residents, including, I'm willing to bet, some folks in the room tonight. The lack of pre-planning also haunts several of my colleagues who were on duty in 2017 and were involved in this project. We also recognize that because of climate change-driven impacts to weather cycles, events that call for a mass evacuation are only going to become more frequent. City Council took all of these factors into consideration when they made enhanced evacuation planning and public education a goal. It is my sincere hope that this plan will be effective in achieving the Council's goal, but also ultimately serve to save lives. The scope of this plan includes an all-hazards approach to mass evacuations. This plan is also intended to be easy for the public to digest while still being an effective tool for incident commanders to visualize areas and populations that they may need to evacuate. Working further down the line, it also helps those of us who will be working in the Emergency Operations Center understand and anticipate sheltering needs. Much of what we will talk about when we get to discussing the evacuation zones will seem obvious or common sense as we sit here in this room, and it is. However, if we are faced with a rapidly evolving incident, having that common sense written down, illustrated, and having a mutual understanding in place between first responders and the public will be key to limiting chaos. As I touched on earlier, Ventura is directly in the crosshairs of a nearly complete cross-section of natural and man-made disasters. We're overdue for a significant earthquake. The Thomas Fire was only a few years ago, but the heavy rains that we've had for the last two years have grown quite a crop of vegetation in our wildland-urban interface zone. I'm sure that wet weather won't last forever. Those same rains caused flooding and raised landslide concerns, especially on the west side. While we can't rely on the rain to keep fuel moisture levels high forever, it seems likely that we can expect more major rain events like those that we saw in February of this year and throughout the winter of last year. We also have a railroad that is used to transport potentially hazardous materials throughout the city, as well as numerous sites throughout the city that store significant quantities of hazmat on-site. We've even had to take hurricanes into our planning as a result of recent experience. One of the first things that we did was to look at our demographics as part of the planning process. A significant portion of our residents, approximately one-third, are somewhere between economically disadvantaged and below the poverty line. Why does this matter for evacuation planning? Because people who have the resources to provide for their own sheltering needs during an evacuation tend to do so in statistically significant numbers. Perhaps they stay in a hotel, or they have friends or family with the space to take them in. Folks who aren't as well-resourced will likely need to take advantage of any sheltering resources we can provide. We also took a look at our elderly and disabled population. These folks may need extra time and assistance to evacuate, as well as additional sheltering accommodations. Nearly one in five of our residents are over 65, and while many of those folks are in better shape than I am, many of them are not. Nearly 10% below the age of 65 have some kind of disability, and while many of those folks don't actually need much in the way of accommodations, there are certainly those that do. After collecting demographic information and matching those numbers with the areas that are most susceptible to likely incidents, we were able to form a clear picture of the numbers of folks we may need to evacuate. The broadest evacuation scenario we considered was an earthquake with citywide impacts that would trigger an evacuation of all 109,000-plus of our residents. Wildfire comes in second, with about 15,000 people residing within the wildland-urban interface fire risk zone. Flood, landslide, tsunami, and dam failure were all nearly tied in a distant third place at approximately 4,000 to 5,000 people each. It is worth mentioning that there could be significant variability in these numbers, especially in our coastal evacuation zone, depending on special events, such as the X Games or the County Fair, that might change those numbers. With those evacuation numbers in hand, we were able to understand the scope of sheltering requirements related to evacuations for a given event. The County Human Services Agency nominally has responsibility for sheltering operations throughout the county, and they do a fantastic job. However, their resources, like any agencies, are finite. As a community, we can no more expect County HSA to ride to our rescue than we can anyone else. The preparation of this plan coincided with a number of improvements to our sheltering readiness, including the pre-positioning of a County HSA Shelter Supply Trailer at Ventura Police Headquarters. That asset stands ready to set up initial operations at the county's presided temporary evacuation point located at Ventura College, or to support sheltering operations at the County Fairground. The city also entered into an agreement with the Ventura Unified School District to use school sites to host shelters in times of need. In addition, there are a small number of city facilities, including West Park and Community, also known as Kimball Park, that we are working with County HSA to establish an MOU that would enable that agency to stand up additional county staff TEPs as needed. A key part of our planning process also involved working with our consultant to reach out to our community stakeholders. We also directly interviewed personnel and outside agency representatives that we anticipate working directly alongside in the event of a mass evacuation and sheltering scenario. Collaboration with the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services proved especially fruitful as they are working on a similar county-wide evacuation plan. By working closely with them, we ensured that their plan will dovetail with ours. When their plan is finalized, we will integrate their evacuation zones into our plan as an annex. The result will be a plan that offers more flexibility to incident commanders while still retaining both planning and operational consistency. We also made a strong push to solicit input from the community. A public survey was made available in English and Spanish late last year and received nearly 1,000 responses. Much of the feedback that we received made its way directly into the first drafts of the plan. Many folks shared their experiences from the Thomas Fire. A major takeaway was a need for the city's public safety team to improve our communication with the community before, during, and after an incident. As the plan progressed toward a final draft state, we made a concerted effort once again to share our work with the community and solicit further input. This outreach effort included numerous presentations at community councils and the hosting of a public evacuation workshop in May. The draft plan and zone maps were also made available on VPD's website. Many ideas, suggestions, and concerns shared with us during this outreach effort are reflected in the final plan and in the post-implementation recommendations outlined in my staff report. Before we move on, we should take a moment to talk about, in general terms, what is in the 100-plus-page evacuation plan document and what is not. The written plan includes a lot of technical details that are critical to implementing the plan. These include, but are not limited to, an outline of the legal authority that underpins the plan and the city's ability to order an evacuation, detailed hazard risk profiles for all zones with the exception of Zone 15, breakdowns of roles and responsibilities for different agencies we are likely to partner with during a major event, procedures for issuing evacuation warnings and orders, plans for post-evacuation reentry and repopulation, appendices with recommended steps that folks with access and functional needs can take to improve their own readiness, and restricted-use annexes that will not be publicly available that detail force levels that will be required to effectively execute traffic control, assuming the availability of both sufficient lead time and resources through mutual aid. The plan also contemplates the use of contraflow traffic patterns. Contraflow describes using both sides of what is normally a two-direction roadway to push traffic in a single direction to boost roadway capacity. The plan concludes that, in most cases, contraflow will increase the amount of traffic control resources required to execute an evacuation safely. In addition, contraflow traffic patterns have inherent risks, such as loss of the ability to push first responders toward a threat. These potential costs and benefits will need to be weighed by an incident commander before contraflow is selected to implement an evacuation. Consequently, contraflow is not mandated in this plan. The plan does not advocate for or against any specific piece or pieces of infrastructure as one of the constraints on the process was working within conditions on the ground as they are today, not as I or anyone else might like them to be. In my mind, this is not the end of better disaster preparedness in Ventura, but it is the beginning. With that said, let's move on to the maps. When we set out to break the city up into more manageable evacuation zones, our thinking was guided by a number of factors, including, in no particular order, the county's draft zones, neighborhood characteristics, arterial and collector routes, major freeways, number of lanes available, potential choke points, population density, and areas that are susceptible to similar threats. For example, it doesn't make sense to lump Pierpont and Andalondo into the same zone based on the hazards that are likely to impact them. This brings us to the overall city map. There are 15 zones in total, but it is worth noting that Zone 15 covers an area north of the city where Ventura's water production infrastructure is located. Zone 15 is mostly uninhabited. The other 14 zones represent the best breakdown that we could come up with, taking all the factors we just talked about into account. The plan also identifies the locations of sites that may be used as shelter locations and evacuation assembly points. These sites are termed potential because their use depends on the specific needs and tactical details of a given disaster scenario. There's an important distinction between shelter and assembly functions. Shelters are places for people to stay and will provide a place to sleep and other resources as necessary. Evacuation assembly points are designed to be points of departure in the event of a citywide evacuation or for folks who do not have their own transportation. Potential shelter locations are shown on this map in red. These shelter locations rely heavily on the city's agreement with the school district to use school sites as shelters. We may add additional potential shelter sites in the future. This map shows our evacuation assembly points, which we've tried to distribute across the city as evenly as possible. These sites were selected for proximity to major arterials and/or freeways and the presence of a large parking lot that can be used to facilitate the arrival and departure of mass transit vehicles. It's also important to understand evacuation terminology. I've included pictures of pizza and pizza ingredients on this slide to assist me in drawing a distinction between evacuation warnings and evacuation orders. An evacuation warning means that we believe an evacuation may be necessary in the near future. future. In other words, we have the ingredients for our pizza, but the oven isn't yet done preheating. An evacuation order, on the other hand, is a lawful order that means that it is time to leave now in the best interest of your safety and that of others. In the pizza analogy, this means that the pizza is here, fully cooked, piping hot, and ready. Shelter in place means that you should prepare to stay where you are until the danger is past and to take steps to fortify your position if possible. To return to the analogy, hopefully you already have plenty of pizza at home. The evacuation plan before you tonight is thorough and in line with industry best practices. However, there is always more we can do to enhance our preparedness. VC Alert is a very good system for public alert and warning, and we use it routinely to provide emergency notifications to the public. However, experience during the Thomas Fire demonstrated that it does have a vulnerability and that it relies on cellphone and email communications to function. If those methods of communication are impacted, VC Alert may no longer function for all or part of the city. While we already have some alternatives available to provide alert and warning, none of them are as efficient, flexible, or as far-reaching as VC Alert is. For this reason, I recommend the council direct staff to explore the deployment of a citywide network of emergency alert sirens and/or addressable loudspeakers and report back on the feasibility of such a system by later this year. Our interactions with the community also reveal the need for additional preparedness training at the neighborhood level. I believe it makes good sense for the city to support the desire of our community to take some level of responsibility for improving their own disaster readiness. While our recently revived CERT program has been wildly successful, there is a limit to how many people we have the capacity to train. Also, the CERT program and curriculum are not completely aligned with the needs that we've heard from the community. To overcome this, I recommend that council direct staff to work with our existing community councils and other community groups to develop a program framework and provide the technical expertise necessary to allow those same groups to stand up their own neighborhood-level response groups. By leveraging existing community relationships, this effort can evolve organically and hopefully prove more durable and sustainable than a purely city-led effort. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council. Councilmember Campos.
I'm back. So you, in the, in the report, I didn't really get through the whole thing with great awakeness because it was a long, long report. You include a chart on page sixteen of demographics, and I want to make sure that the demographics you've included, or you've listed here are all-inclusive. If they're not, then I can leave the question alone, but there is a little deficiency, I see.
Councilmember Campos, what deficiency would that be?
So you list persons with a disability as under age sixty-five years old and the figure. The neighborhood I live in, I know at least eleven people in their eighties with disabilities who use walkers or wheelchairs, and because it's harder to evacuate a person in a wheelchair or with a walker, they really need to be included in the numbers.
Councilmember Campos, I believe I understand your question a little bit better now. Those numbers were pulled from the most recent census data and apply to the city as a whole. There, there may be local cases where the statistics are different than what you're seeing on the page there.
Okay, thank you. And then you just mentioned siren system or broadcast system, but we also have a, not that significant, but a community of people who are hearing impaired, so I hope we'll include some means of, of notifying or contacting them.
I'll do my absolute best. My mission is to do the most good for the most people that I can. I'll definitely keep that in mind as we explore alternatives. But again, a siren seems like it might be a great way to reach most of the community, but your, your comments understood and taken under advisement.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Douglas. Can you go to, I think it's slide sixteen? It's, it's the map? Yeah, anyway, the maps. on the east end of, of Area Fourteen, that's really kind of the 101 freeway, so do we have problems, particular problems in this area relative to if the freeway collapses in an earthquake or something like that? How, how do you get out of Area Fourteen?
We would definitely have significant problems if we lost a major freeway like that. If you were going to leave Area Fourteen, you would most likely be looking at going south on Harbor into Oxnard, assuming they have the ability to receive those folks, or you could look at going to, you could travel east on Olivas and then north.
Is there an issue that there's, I noticed there's no shelters for all of Fourteen?
The issue that we ran into there, Pierpont Elementary is in, is in Zone Fourteen, and we did consider using it. However, Zone Fourteen's largest potential threat is tsunami, and the likelihood that that shelter site would be wiped out by the tsunami is high, so it seemed inadvisable to list that as a potential shelter.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll go out to public comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No public comment cards received on item number thirteen.
Back to council, a motion is required. We have some recommendations from staff. Mr. Douglas, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. McReynolds?
I'd like to move to approve staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the staff recommendation on number thirteen. Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
And Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Seven, eyes. The motion carries.
So before you two leave, and Chief Schindler, a special thanks from all seven of us. It's very complicated to think of all the scenarios that can happen and the combination of scenarios, and there's no such thing as a perfect plan, and I know that good Venturaans are going to have to adapt. This is such a great start, and I just applaud your efforts, and thank you very much. Onto item fourteen. Public art agreement with Studio Lachlin Turcans for public art associated with the Advanced Water Purification Facility. Staff presentation, please. I am sorry if I butchered that name. I'm doing my best, folks. I feel better that some people pronounce my name Schrader, and some pronounce it Schroder, and like, it doesn't offend me at all anymore because I have butchered half the last names of the city of Ventura, and I apologize for that.
For the record, I'm Emily Fox, Recreation Manager in the Parks and Recreation Department, and with me is Linda Samansky, Ventura Water Pure Program Director in Ventura Water. We are excited to be able, to be here tonight so that we can share with you the process we've taken over the last year to select an artist for the public art component of the Advanced Water Purification Facility project, and then we're also here to provide a recommendation that's not only supported by city staff, but by the Water Commission and the Arts and Culture Commission, too. So to provide a little background on the public art program, in nineteen ninety-one, City Council adopted an ordinance that established the public art program. Within the public art program, two percent of all eligible capital improvement projects were set aside for public art. So the funding that was set aside could either be incorporated into the project where it's collected from, so say adding a sculpture to a building, adding some beautiful decorative features to the facade of an outside structure, or that funding could be placed in the public art fund for use in a future project that was more fitting. In two thousand twelve, City Council modified that ordinance and approved a temporary moratorium or stop on that two percent collection for water and wastewater projects. So since that moratorium was set in place, no new public art funding has been collected on water and wastewater projects. The funding that had previously, previously been collected from those water and wastewater projects remains in the public art fund, and it's reserved specifically for a public art project connected to a future water CIP. Now, in two thousand twenty-three, we were beyond excited because the Advanced Water Purification Facility was shared with us, and from a public art perspective, it's really an incredible project for enhancing it with public art. The intent there being that, the location, so the proximity to Ventura Harbor, its accessibility to not only our community, but also to visitors who can go over to the facility, they can wander through the landscaped area and see this new amazing facility, but also the ability to use art as an educational tool. So one of the things we look at is, we can use that as a tool to help visually demonstrate not only the water cycle, but also to help educate about the purification process. So you get the education tool, the beautification, and again, we just, as a team and as a commission, we're so excited to be able to sink our teeth into it. So, once the project was identified, we brought it to the Arts and Culture Commission, who approved having it included in the annual project plan, and the annual public art project plan is part of the larger city's capital improvement plan. Once it was approved by the Arts and Culture Commission, we then the following month worked with the commission on the selection process that we were proposing for the artist, and then that following month, in August of two thousand twenty-three, we released the formal call to artists, the request for qualifications nationally. So there were a hundred and fourteen artists that submitted their qualifications. A fun fact, there were five Ventura artists, and then I believe it was twenty-four from California, and the rest were from across the United States. So in November of two thousand twenty-three, the Arts and Culture Commission selected four of those artists to prepare a pre-concept proposal and to go through the interview process, and then in May of two thousand twenty-four, those four artists were interviewed. And I'm going to pass it over to Linda to walk you through the interview process.
All right. So if we're, I wanted to walk you through just the process that we went through over the past several months in a little bit more detail. So we did put together a panel to interview the, review the proposals and to interview the artists. You can see from the list here that it is a mix of folks. We included the Public and Community Art Coordinator from Parks and Recs and someone from the Arts and Culture Commission. From the water side, I actually sat on the panel, and we had one of our water commissioners on the panel also. And then we also had some help from an outside consultant who does this type of thing on a regular basis, and as Ms. Fox said, that we had four folks that we had interviewed. So the panel, after hearing the interviews and revert, and reviewing the proposals, did unanimously select and recommend the artist team that we have listed here. What, I think what everyone found on that panel was that these folks have participated in some very complex projects, but they're also able to use their art to tell a story. And from our standpoint, their proposal really did show that they were going to be able to effectively illustrate the transformation of water, you know, which is what we're trying to do at this facility. So we did want to add just a couple of items from their proposal here. As Ms. Fox mentioned, there are a number of things that we believe that having the art incorporated into our design will actually provide for us. We believe that it will enhance, enhance the public enjoyment of the facility. We still want to have people come and tour our facility and understand what we're doing at that facility. We believe art can actually help enhance some of that public education. And there were a couple of things on this list that really stuck out to us, and one was, you know, the fact that, you know, we can gather people together to help learn about this facility and, and our water supplies. And a couple of the others are related specifically to the processing that we have at that plant. We are going to be using light to transform water and disinfect it. We are going to eventually be injecting this water into the ground for, you know, for future use. And those types of concepts came through in the proposal that these artists put together. I also wanted to mention that some of these things, the education portion of it, some of the landscaping that we need to do, those are requirements that we have as part of our local coastal program amendment. So we believe this is really complimentary to help fulfilling those requirements also.
So once the, the review panel made their recommendation on an artist team, we took that recommendation to both the Arts and Culture Commission, as well as the Water Commission, and both commissions unanimously voted to recommend an execution of a contract with the artist team. The artists you see in front of you, they're also referred to as Studio Lachlin Turzen. And the intent of executing the agreement is so that the artist team can begin working with the contract designers, so the landscape architect, the architect, and they can look at the best mechanism or the best path forward for incorporating public art. It could be through the landscape, it could be incorporated or integrated into the facility, or it could be standalone components. And like Linda had mentioned, it's really to look at, how do we enrich that visitor experience? You've got community members, visitors, who will be able to come over from the Ventura Harbor. We can really look at amplifying that civic mission, so with that Advanced Water Purification Facility, talking about the water cycle, the purification process, and then really an opportunity to bring the community together, to engage, and my favorite, to capture the imagination. So next steps in the process, once the artist agreement is executed, the design team, so like I mentioned, the architect, the landscape designer, the artist team, as well as city staff and commissioners, will all begin working together throughout the various phases of the process. Each team will play a different role. So as city staff and commissions, we will oversee the project from start to finish. Our artist team will really be the collaborators. They'll be collaborating with city staff, with commission, they'll be receiving our input, incorporating it into their design, and then they'll also be working with the facility design team to identify, again, what is that best iteration or path forward with the public art. And then the facility design team will do the overall coordination, they'll do the facility dine, design, and then the construction. So to showcase on the screen the various phases, specifically connected to the artist team, once the facility design team gets to thirty percent of their design, that's when the artist team will really start looking at what design concept are they going to put forward. So like I mentioned, is it going to be incorporated into the landscape, the facility, and/or standalone projects? Once the facility design team gets to sixty percent design, the conceptual design will be completed by the artist team, and that will go to the Water Commission first. They'll review the conceptual proposal and provide their input, and then it will go to the Arts and Culture Commission, who will review, provide input, and they're responsible for final approval. Once the Arts and Culture Commission approves the conceptual design, it goes back to the artist team, who will complete their final design, and once again, the final design goes back to the Water Commission for review and input, and then to the Arts and Culture Commission for final approval. Depending on what iteration the public art becomes, it may also go to the Design Review Committee, or it could be a subcommittee that includes the members from the Arts and Culture Committee and members from the Design Review Committee. Once the final design is completed, fabrication is begun, and then final installation. Again, a project that, over the past year, has gained tremendous excitement. I will share, I wasn't going to, but last night, as I was going through my presentation, my son, who's fourteen, who's probably going to, if he watches this, say, "Mom," but he asked me, "What are you doing, Mom?" And I said, "Oh, I'm just preparing for a presentation." Talked to him a little bit about the project, and he held the hard copy of the slides. And so I started to go through the presentation, and when I got to the section that showed... And so I started to go through the presentation, and when I got to the section that showed the process proposal for the artist team, he put it up a little bit closer, his eyesight's better than mine, and he really started to ask a ton of questions about, "Well, walk me through the art piece, walk me through what's actually going on at the purification facility." We actually went to the city's website and polled Studio Lachlan Turzin's proposal, and he started talking, and he is not an art person by any means. He loves outdoors, going in the ocean, he loves video games. But it was, for me, really magical to see him make that connection of the artwork that that Studio Lachlan Turzin put together, make the connections with the water process, the eventual studio. And again, it just was one of those moments that warmed my heart. So, again, I'll probably get in trouble when I get home for sharing. But, so for tonight, I wanted to share with you the recommendation that I mentioned earlier. Again, it's supported by city staff, also by the Arts and Culture Commission and the Water Commission, but the recommendation is to approve and authorize the city manager or designee to execute a public art agreement with Studio Lachlan Turzin for artist collaboration on the Advanced Water Purification Facility in substantially similar form to what was attached to the staff report. The term July 17th, 2024, to December 31st, 2027, not to exceed $1 million during the duration of the contract pursuant to Section 4.600.140 of the Minnesota State Code. And again, that funding exists currently in the Public Art Fund. Second portion of the recommendation is to approve and authorize the city manager or designee to amend the contract in amount not to exceed just under $200,000 in the contingency fund. That's the end of our presentation, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you much. Counsel, questions? Mr. Halter?
Just one, I was just looking to double check. Is this a permanent art installation?
Yes, it would be a permanent public art installation.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Campos?
So do you have plans to have staff available to do tours for people?
Thank you, Mayor Schrader, Councilmember Campos. Yes, we do. We do do, we offer tours at our reclamation facility now, and we would like to do that same sort of thing at this new facility.
It's a huge sum of money. It's hard to swallow when we're not able to do a lot of other things in the city. So, about this, the fund, the Public Art Fund, can you explain where that comes from or how it came to be over $1 million in the water department area?
So, what I can share about the Public Art Fund is, as I mentioned earlier, so that 2% collection from eligible capital improvement projects, so an eligible project would be any project funded wholly or in part by the city. Typically, it would be for the construction and/or the remodeling of, say, a park, a street. So again, this funding would be connected to a project for water and wastewater. Excluded from that, even in the initial 1991 ordinance, was any water or sewer line replacement. So, from the start of the ordinance, 1991, until 2012, it was that 2% allocation that was placed into the Public Art Fund for those projects that were deemed eligible. So over time, it built up. At one point in time, it was allocated to another project, but the project didn't proceed as planned, and so that's why the sum is larger than, that's why the sum is such a large amount.
And were all the projects that fed into this fund water projects, or were they other projects too?
So this funding is exclusive to water and wastewater project. So any other projects eligible for that 2%, so for public works, for parks and recreation, it's held in a separate part of the Public Art Reserve Fund.
Thank you.
And if I can follow up on a little bit of that. So, for about 11 years, starting back into the, in the 90s, and then we stopped in 2012, right? So, all those funds were collected from capital improvement projects dealing with water and wastewater, then we stopped collecting that 12 years ago, and then this money has to go towards art, public art in the water realm. Okay, all right. Thank you much. Other questions from City Council? Public comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have three speaker cards submitted on item number 14. Our first speaker is Karen Kitchell, followed by George Amidola and Spencer Noran. Speakers will have three minutes.
Hello. My name's Karen Kitchell. I'm a local artist here in Ventura, currently serving as Vice Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. I was elected by my fellow commissioners to participate on the art selection panel for the Ventura Water Pier site. I'm here tonight to enthusiastically endorse our unanimous choice of the Studio Lachlan Turzin. We had the privilege to review an exceptionally strong professional field, 114 applications, not one or two, but very professional experts that deal in these kinds of projects around the world. So it was a very prestigious group of people that wanted to participate in this for us. But the aesthetics, the thought process that was demonstrated, and the sensitivity incorporating stories about water and water stewardship made our chosen team stand out high above the rest. Highly skilled in multiple areas, the artists on Lachlan Turzin team possess an outstanding expertise in not only aesthetic design, but also budgets, engineering, and the understanding of the central role of water in our community. What will be important for all of us here and for this project is that these artists embody a generous, collaborative spirit and a demonstrated respect for community in their work. They have a history of exceptionally beautiful projects, and they blew us away with their ability to show people what they mean, not just tell them or lecture them about it. This is an attitude that is sometimes hard to find in public art. But I can guarantee these artists are definitely user-friendly. I'm confident this team will bring very valuable contributions to a thoughtful integration of science, beauty, reclamation, and poetic engineering at the Ventura Water Pier site. Visitors, employees, and our community at large will be enriched by this work. I enthusiastically recommend the approval of the contract. Thank you so much for your attention.
Our next speaker is George Amidola, followed by Spencer Noran.
Hello, good evening, Counsel. Look, I like art, and it happened to be my best subject, art history in undergraduate school. And I have to say, it was enjoyable art appreciation over accounting, business, and economics. So, I'm not here to talk against the art project. It's probably a tremendous project, but it also comes at a tremendous expense to the ratepayers of the city of Ventura. And those are my concerns, and they have all been my concerns about the Advanced Water Pure project. A few weeks ago, we were here, and the environmental activists from the Wistoyo were speaking remotely. I don't think any of them live in this city, as best as I can tell. And I will remember Councilmember McReynolds say, when you were approving that vote, "Now you know what it's like to have a gun to your head." Those words resonated with me. So as part of this platform of art, how can this artist depict council being held hostage to this decision-making, which is going to triple the Ventura Water Ratepayers' bills by 2040? My bill at my homeowners' association is currently $7,000 plus a month, so I can forecast that's going to go up to $21,000 a month. What is that going to do to the average homeowner? And we're here talking about spending $1,002,000 on art. Yeah, the money's been scrolled away previously, but is it the best use of that money when other projects aren't being funded, other art projects? We heard from the Rubicon a few weeks ago, how they require funding. Now, I realize this is supposed to be for water exclusively. We know the museum requires funding. We know that other projects could require funding. But is this a presumptive way that staff could be using to move forward your approval process of an unknown design for the Advanced Water Pier facility? That report is written very interestingly. There's, it's kind of cryptic to me, and especially, tongue-in-cheek, how it's written by the preparers that Mr. Aluve is the interim city manager and not the city manager. That's a recent report. So, I'm wondering why it's not accurate, at least from that basic point. And you're talking about $1,199,000 in awarding $1,195,000, exhausting the complete fund. But even the number of the fund, to me, doesn't appear accurate, because that number of $1,199,000 appears it's a 2023 number. It's not a current number today, and in the report, it says approximate. So it was interesting to see on that slide, 30%, 60%. That reminds me of how the E and R budget and the approvals for overage will take place with the overall Water Pier project. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Spencer Noran.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor, Counsel, VPD, translation, thank you. Ms. Fox, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate you looking at me while I'm talking, means a lot. This is a conversation that's going full circle for me, the former Parks and Recreation Commissioner, always a huge fan of public art, always diving into the budget with staff, and we never had money. So first off, I want to say, I would like to encourage Counsel to remove the moratorium from all CIP projects on the Ventura Water Pier and give me my 2% back that was taken away. That would be my first question I would ask if I was Counsel. Why did that get taken, 2% get taken away? And now that we've got $700 million worth of projects coming for the Ventura Water Pier, wouldn't it be great if we had that money for our public arts? I think it would be. So enact that 2%, and let's find out where that money can be used in the future for all these projects that we need, because the money disappear for the projects the community wanted. But for what staff wanted, the money came in truckloads, right? We didn't want to hook up the state water to get 10%, because we wanted 20% from this plan that's been going for over 15, 20 years, along with the most beautiful piece of property across the street on Alievus and Harbor. That property should be used for the community. We all know it, whether it be a park, an extension of the golf course, maybe a master clubhouse for the two best public golf courses in the state of California. But it's not. It's manipulated into municipalities. Now that that's happened, and I'm against that, how can we make it the best for the community in that situation now? The artist looks cool, I appreciate that, but have they been to that location and that site 24 hours a day? Are we aware that we're living in a massive homeless area of probably the highest drug and crime rate in the city of Ventura at that exact location? Believe it, because I saw some neon light posts and some neon, they'll get broken, busted. I want to see water involved, right? Let's see something interactive that our community can experience, who are vastly in majority against the Ventura Water Pier project. Give us something that we like and deserve for our $750 million. George Amidola makes a great point. This has been force-fed down our throats, because we can't get our projects done for years. But all of a sudden, Ventura Water wants to speed up the process, "Here's an art project, here's bidding, here's all this stuff." Wow, is it fast how fast that happens, when we had a piece of land and they could, because is this art project also putting the cart in front of the horse to get the final approval of Ventura Water? I honestly think that it is at this point. We're putting sexy, something great, that everyone get involved with to say the process has already happened, and it hasn't. You still have the power to save close to $1 billion for up to 20% of the water allotment. We can find new ways to stop Ventura Water Pier. Don't let arts come in the way of that process. Stand firm with the people. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on item 14.
Back to City Council, comments, deliberations, questions? Seeing none, a vote, please?
Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, we need a motion. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now discussions. My view on this is, it's a lot of money. I'm a great believer in art, but when I did the math in my head, for a period of about 33 years, we put aside $2,500 a month for art, and I'm okay with that. It's, ends up being a lot of money, but that was what the money is supposed to be put for. So with that, if there's no other comments, we'll take a vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the staff recommendation. Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Ms. Semenski, Ms. Fox, thank you very much. Congratulations. On to item number 15, City Council Medical Benefits Review and Update. I believe there's a staff presentation.
Good evening, Counsel. I'm Monica Delaue, Assistant City Attorney, and this evening, Assistant Human Resources Director Valerie Barroso will be presenting the information requested by Counsel regarding Counsel benefits. And after Counsel provides direction on the level of benefits for Counsel members, we will return with the resolution to implement the benefit contributions.
Good evening. Mayor Schrader, members of the City Council. Currently, the Counsel members are eligible to purchase group medical insurance, up to six plan options, dental insurance, up to two plan options, and vision insurance benefits for the city, for themselves, and for the eligible family members. Counsel members may elect medical, dental, or vision insurance at the time of appointment, and then each year during open enrollment. The city does not currently make any contributions towards Counsel member health benefits coverage, which means Counsel members must pay the full cost of the coverage. Counsel also has the option to participate in the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan at their own expense. The next open enrollment period for the city's insurance plans is October 14th through the 25th of this year, and this will be for plan coverage that begins on January 1st of 2025. As such, any benefit modifications that Counsel determines is appropriate would be effective at that time. That would be January 1st of next year. City staff recently conducted a compensation survey of other comparable agencies. Of the 17 agencies that were surveyed, benefit information was provided by 14 agencies. Most of the city's comparable agencies contribute towards their medical and dental insurance for Counsel members, with some providing life insurance, vision insurance, and employee assistance program benefits. There were a few agencies that provide contributions towards deferred compensation and some other various benefits. The survey average for city-paid medical insurance contributions for the survey agencies was approximately $1,777 per month. The current maximum monthly city contributions towards medical coverage for city employees are indicated in the first table on the slide. For example, the first column on that first table indicates the various monthly city contributions towards executive employee medical benefits. So, executive employees with employee-only coverage receive- medical benefits. So executive employees with employee-only coverage receive approximately $859 a month towards their medical premiums, employee plus one coverage, $1,064 a month, and family coverage, $1,434 a month for medical coverage. And you can see there the contribution levels for management in the second column, as well as the supervisory unit in the third column. The second table indicates the city's current monthly contribution amounts towards the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. Again, that first column reflects the executive unit contribution, which is a total of $378 a month. And that's comprised of a non-matching contribution that the city provides in the amount of $294.67 a month. And then if the employee participates and puts in at least $83.33 a month, the city provides a matching contribution as well. The second column reflects the city contributions for management, and the third column reflects the city contribution for supervisory employees. Of note, the city does fully contribute to the dental, vision, life insurance, and employee assistance program benefits for city employees. Life insurance is provided to employees at the rate of one times the annual salary for these particular units that are reflected on the slide. Some alternatives to consider this evening for council are as follows. You could consider adding a medical contribution not to exceed the executive unit contribution. You could consider adding city-paid dental, vision, and/or life insurance. You'll recall that most of the agencies that we surveyed typically do provide medical and dental contributions for council members. You could consider adding other benefits, including deferred compensation contributions and/or employee assistance program benefits. You could add a combination of any of the above benefits, or you can elect not to add any city contributions towards benefits. The approximate cost to add sitting contributions for council for the remainder of the fiscal year, you'll remember that would be starting January 1 and going through June 30 of 2025, is reflected there in the table. And under the medical insurance column, you'll see a range, and that's because we won't be able to anticipate what kind of coverages that would be selected by council. So the low end of the range for medical insurance makes an assumption that a, one council member would enroll at the supervisory level contribution. So really, the, the most conservative amount, most conservative estimate on enrollment. The top part of that range assumes that all seven council members would enroll in employee plus one coverage at the executive level contribution. So more on the upper end of what we might anticipate as far as enrollment numbers. The dental insurance reflects a low and high as well. The low reflects all seven council members enrolled in the city's HMO-style dental plan. The high number reflects the, that all seven council members would be enrolled in the city's PPO-style dental plan. And then you see there all, the assumption on vision and life insurance and employee assistance program would be that all seven council members would be enrolled in the plans. And then deferred compensation, the low end of that range is an assumption that the council would elect to, to receive the supervisory unit contribution, and the high end reflects the executive unit contribution that was shown on the prior slide. Should council elect to add any benefits, a resolution would be provided for consideration at a forthcoming council meeting. So again, what we're looking at is what benefits should council members receive? These are the options listed. Again, we're looking at medical. We've talked about dental, vision, life insurance. And I will say that the life insurance would be at the, the rate of one times the annual, it's not a salary necessarily that you receive, but a stipend. So it would be one times your annual stipend amount. There, there's consideration of the employee assistance program. That would be six free visits with a counselor through that plan for you and anyone in your household. And then the deferred compensation plan with the city match and non-match contributions. There were some of those other benefits that I mentioned that some of our survey agencies provide. It's not common. There were just a couple of agencies that provided benefits such as a retirement health savings ability. We do provide that to our executive group, but it is paid by the employees themselves. So there would be no city contribution for the city of Ventura. Some of the other agencies provided auto allowance, but very uncommon. The most common, again, were the medical and dental. And then there were a few more agencies that offered the vision, life, and EAP. Then we'll also be looking for guidance from you regarding what level you would have an interest in, which would be that executive, management, or supervisory for the contribution Here's some examples of, of a package that we put together. It assumes employee plus one for all council members for medical coverage. It, we average the HMO and PPO premiums for the dental plan as an assumption. It includes vision, life insurance, and an employee assistance program. And this is, again, for the remainder of the fiscal year. For this package at the executive level in that first column, it would be a total of $47,803 for six months of coverage. And for management-level contributions, it would be a total of $45,535 for six months of coverage. And for the supervisory level in that third column, the total city contribution would be $44,401 for the six months of coverage. Now, this is at today's plan, plan contribution levels. The current levels are in place through June 30 of 2026 for all of our various units. So at this time, staff recommends that you direct staff regarding benefits and level of contributions to include in a future resolution. And we're available to address any questions that you have.
Thank you much. Questions or comments from city council? Deputy Mayor.
Just have a quick question in the report, or the staff report. So Ventura is one of three cities out of 18 that do not offer any benefits, paid benefits to council? Is that right?
That is probably correct. Most cities, at least within our survey bunch, and this is our standard executive level survey agency list that we used, at least offer the medical and dental contributions.
Contributions, right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to get some clarification from the attorney's office in terms of, and again, I know you've mentioned this before, but why this type of compensation doesn't need a charter amendment versus, what do we call it, stipend on it? Thank you.
Yes. I'm Councilmember McReynolds. So compensation is municipal affair, but the legislature has determined that benefits are a statewide affair. So, for example, a charter amendment doesn't have to follow the government code for compensation, but it does have to follow the government code for benefits. So amending the charter for benefits is not the proper route because the government code applies.
Could we go to slide six? And, and kind of the way I'm, I'm looking at this is, and as, as was mentioned by the city manager, we're in our recruitment period right now for potential candidates to run for council for the next term. In terms of this list of benefits, what would, and in terms of, as an HR professional, what you see, what benefits would encourage the most people to potentially apply? Or what are they looking for? What is the, what are the most desired, you know, benefits that's going to get somebody to say, I want to run for city council?
I think it would be difficult to anticipate that as each individual's needs and circumstances. If they're retired and have a retiree benefit, they may not have an interest in medical. Whereas if they don't have medical available to them, then that may be, become of interest to them. So it, it really just depends on each individual's circumstances. I will say that the, the most costly benefit would, of course, be the, the medical coverage. The least costly would be the employee assistance program, although there's great value in that. So it, it really just depends on each individual's circumstances as to what would be attractive to them.
My last question would be, could you just kind of define the employee assistance program?
So the employee assistance program is a, a program that the city purchases on behalf of all of their employees, where employees who need counseling assistance for any variety of, of reasons, someone to talk to about issues that may be occurring in their personal life or in the workplace, it gives them a resource to be able to talk with a professional counselor. It provides an ability to, to have counseling services done on the phone, remotely via, like a Zoom-type software, via text, if you want a quick check-in chat. There are different modalities that employees can use, whatever they're comfortable with. It's also available to members of their household, because the goal is that anything that's in the employees' realm that could affect the employees' frame of mind and psyche, we want to be able to help those individuals as well so that we can then kind of indirectly assist the employee. So even if it's not a relative, if there's a member of the household that, that needs a similar service, they're welcome to participate in the program as well. It's six free counseling sessions per event per year. So it's, it's a good robust benefit for a, a small investment. And there are also other services offered at a discounted rate through the EAP, including legal advisement, credit advisement. If you have senior parents, they will assist in, in finding different resources for caring for your elderly parent or young children. So it's just a really good resource to, to help employees, to help, you know, potentially help council members with, with anything they're dealing with in their lives.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember Duran.
So I, I would like to understand the, should the city be providing these benefits to council members? Is that the whole contribution? Or would council members be paying half or a portion of the benefit?
It depends on the plans that are selected, and it depends on how many people you're covering. And it also depends on what the rate of the premium is at the time you're enrolling. Our premiums are, are adjusted by the providers in January of each year. Unfortunately, they are not going down very often these days, and in fact, are going up pretty significantly. So it, it really just depends. There could be no out-of-cost for some of our low-cost HMOs with single-party coverage. But when you start adding, you know, family members, and if you're looking at like a PPO-style plan, then there would be some out-of-pocket for, for the council member.
So to follow up, if, I think part of the goal is to bring younger people onto the council. If someone gets elected this year and has two children and a wife he's providing dental care for, what would his contribution be if he chose the PPO plan?
It would be significant. Our, PPO plans are expensive, and so there's absolutely a, a, a portion of that that is paid by the council member. So it, it would depend on what PPO is elected. We have a couple of options. So we would have to look at that and look at the premiums. And we don't have our January premiums yet either. So not, not sure what those will be starting in January.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Duran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my questions were pretty, they were, it was similar to Councilmember Campos. Basically, these are all contributions that are made, and insurance could be higher, or more than, more than likely higher in the medical part of it, but not necessarily in the dental, vision, life insurance, and employee assistance. Correct? So there could be, it could be completely covered on the, on the last four, generally not the medical, but the other ones might be completely covered.
Yes. In fact, the city currently covers at 100% the dental and the vision and the life insurance for regular employees. So council could consider up to that amount as well, as far as a contribution is concerned.
Thank you.
Councilmember Halter.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. I have some very basic questions that I have to ask because I'm not as familiar with this, and I was busy looking at all the other items on our agenda. So now that we're, just help me through the math. Is that on, on slide four with employee plus one, executive unit, current employee group contribution is $1,064. So that's just their contributions. There's more of a, a rate that goes with that medical, I'm assuming.
That is the city contribution alone. We did not include the actual plan rates in the presentation.
Because if I then extrapolate and go up to slide seven, and medical, assuming employee plus one, and you have $44,688 for the six months, help me define what that amount totals.
So the $44,688 is for the six-month period, the remaining six months in the, in the fiscal year. And that would assume that every council member enrolled at, in the employee plus one coverage for the six-month period.
So that's employee plus one, so for 14 people for six months. So if I go back to the employee contribution?
Seven, for, times seven.
Times seven. So, yeah, so that'd be seven, plus, they're plus one, so that'd be 14 people covered. I'm trying to relate it to the, a current employee group contribution for the same executive coverage. Maybe, I can't do that.
So, let's see. That is, so the first column is the executive level amount. So we took the employee plus one contribution for the executive level amount, just the full contribution, assuming that you would be utilizing the full contribution for most of our plans. And then we multiplied that by seven council members, and then multiplied that by six months of coverage.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So that is the, and then, of course, underneath that, on slide seven, is if we add these other benefits, then it's the total cost for that six months for the seven council members, $47,803.
Correct. That's the city cost.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was following the math right. And then, one other thing, just because I'm not familiar with a lot of these terms, is deferred compensation. Is that, if somebody chooses to not elect to take advantage, then that's what they would get? Or tell me what it is.
So the deferred compensation, you're familiar probably with a 401K plan in the private sector. It is the public sector equivalent to a 401K.
Great. Being self-employed, I'm not quite familiar with some of that. So I'm getting there though, so thank you.
Yes. It's a supplement to a, a defined contribution retirement plan.
And would it be completely up to the, our council on if we wanted a certain percent of that coverage?
It's a flat dollar amount, and my understanding from legal is that, correct me if I'm wrong, Monica, you, you would not be able to elect a contribution amount that exceeds the executive level amount. So anything at that point or below would be an option for council.
Okay. Because, let's see. So if we wanted to, going back to Councilmember Campos's questions, is if we wanted to do like 30% or 50% of the cost of, city have a contribution of 50% or 30% or something like that, we could do something like that, as long as it doesn't exceed what we do for executive employees. Correct?
Yes. I think we would be looking for a fixed, flat-dollar amount contribution. So if you wanted to look at 50% of the executive contribution, is that, is that where you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Then, anything below what that maximum contribution is, I believe, is, is we're able to do that.
And currently, we're allowed to buy into the city's And currently, we're allowed to buy into the city's plans for every one of these, every one of these benefits. Is that correct? Or is it just medical, dental and vision?
Medical, dental, vision, and you can opt into the 457 and it would be at 100% at the council member's cost.
Okay. And do you have any idea how the city's plans compare to the private plans?
To private plans? I, I don't know. I, I would assume that the actual coverages themselves are very similar. I think maybe where they might differ are copays and out-of-pocket expenses, deductibles, that type of thing. But no, I think they're pretty similarly situated to the, to what you'd find in the private sector.
Even the cost of such plan? Because?
Because they're group plans regardless of whether they're, you're a public employee or a private employee. We have direct contracts, very similar to what a company would have for their private employees.
Like given the number of employees and salaries, I would think that the city's plans would be better than, on most small businesses at least, right?
I, I don't, I can't speak to that. I'm, I guess I'm not familiar enough with how they compare specifically. I, I just know from personal experience that they're probably pretty similar depending on where you work and how the plans are structured.
Because my experience is that it, it's significantly better, the city plan. But maybe I have the wrong group plan. So, but nonetheless, I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Councilmember Halter, I just wanted to say, you know, I do the, I buy my insurance through the city. My wife buys insurance for herself through the, through her employer and then my son who's at university and that. The rates are really all very comparable. And then if anything's a little different, I will say that the city does a pretty good job at offering one really low rate for, for a single person. So I have a question for Ms. De La Hoya. Did we get a written opinion from the state attorney general on this interpretation?
No, we didn't request one.
Councilmember Johnson, we did check on this issue with outside counsel as well and they did agree with our interpretation of the charter that the language regarding compensation is just regarding the monthly compensation to council members and that for benefits that city council could proceed as proposed without a charter amendment being necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I'm thinking though of, you know, a dozen former city attorneys who did not have this interpretation. Was there a change in the law?
I don't know what you're referring to as what attorney general opinions didn't have an interpretation that benefits would have been.
So one of the options back in March, Ms. De La Hoya, was to seek an attorney general's opinion. And I just wanted to verify that we didn't actually do that. I'm, I'm talking about, you know, my discussions with former city attorneys and, you know, that we've never offered it. You know, just most recently, you know, Andy Haglund felt that this wouldn't have been allowable. And Greg Diaz certainly didn't think this was allowable and Ariel Cologne didn't think that this was allowable. And so I'm curious if something in the law changed so that they were right, but the situation has changed?
I'm not familiar with any previous opinions. We did confirm with outside counsel and outside counsel was in agreement that because benefits have been determined a matter of statewide concern by the legislature, we cannot exceed what the government code provides for benefits unlike what we can do for compensation.
Thank you. I, when, when did the state determine that benefits are a matter of statewide concern?
I don't know when the government codes, the specific government codes were enacted, but I can refer them to you and I can look them up. It's, I mean, I have the government codes, but I don't know when they were enacted.
I would appreciate that. While you're doing that, I have a question for Mr. Hogan. So theoretically, the, the way this would play out would probably be under a lawsuit under the Private Attorneys General Act, is that correct? If somebody wanted to challenge this?
Yes, that would, that would most likely be the case. I would likely need to think about that a little bit more, but initially I think that's where the, the lawsuit would come under.
And you're very confident that we would prevail in that lawsuit?
Yes, I do think the city would prevail in that lawsuit.
Okay. Okay. Well, Ms. De La Hoya, you can, you can belay that. I'm satisfied. Thank you very much, Mr. Hogan. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Other questions? If not, we'll go out to the public, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One speaker on item number 15, Glenn Overly. And speakers will have three minutes. Glenn, we're going to bring you over right now. Okay, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me, Michael?
We can. Go for it.
Perfect. You know, I'm, I've looked at these numbers and I'm, the one thing that stands out to me is this is a year that council with the ballot measure where you stuffed in additional compensation for city council members on a ballot measure. And now this, it may, it seems to me like you should really be taking baby steps here. And we're spending money that quite frankly, I think is getting kind of tight. Additionally, if medical insurance is going to be the reason why somebody decides they want to be a councilman, councilperson, that's not really a good enough reason. I would also like to say that I think it would be better for compensation-wise if we played, if we paid council members rather than the 600 per month, $400 per city council meeting. And what this would do is it would increase the frequency of meetings, which we've been trying to have for a while. Because if you only had two meetings a month, you would only get 800 bucks. So I know I'm being a little sarcastic here, but what I would like to see is maybe double the value amount for the city of, I think it's Simi Valley. Yeah, Simi Valley. I'd like to see a double what they're getting paid for their medical, which is zero. You could double it or triple it, it would be the same. But again, I make my comments, if we're, if we're getting a council member because there's medical insurance, deferred comp or whatever, I think that's really the wrong reason. Secondarily, I don't think you're full-time employees. In fact, on that, I think there are some council members that even at 600 bucks per month, with the amount of work they're actually doing, are currently overpaid. So I'm trying to help out by saying $400 per meeting, but the medical insurance, maybe we take a year off and, and breathe deeply. I mean, with Water Pure and all the other issues we have going, spending money, I gotta believe Mr. Morley's pulling hair out of his head and before long, he'll look like me, Mr. Johnson and the monkey on the wall behind Councilman Johnson. And I know I'm being sarcastic, but I found this really kind of insulting that it came up when we've had so many meetings showing how much money the city doesn't have and yet we're going to spend money on the arts. We're going to spend money to help Rubicon. And these are, these are really good things. I like art. I like theater. But there comes a point where you gotta look at your budget and say, is the money there? And I suspect my closing comment is, the money's not there, let's not stretch our budget. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on item number 15.
Back to city council, I'll, I'll start out if you don't mind. I think the appropriate step for us is that we consider benefits and we go whatever we decide tonight to let everybody that votes then determine in November if our compensation is where it should be or it should be increased. I think it would be disingenuous of us to go out to ballot to ask for an increase in the compensation city council gets and then two months or three months later, then come back for benefits. I think it's more transparent for us to vote now, before November, on what benefits that we think are appropriate for a city council member. This one person's feeling. Councilmember Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, okay, so now as far as comments, I am very happy getting my insurance through the city's group plan. I switched over from my own private, self-employment plan because the, the rate that I was paying for the same Kaiser premium insurance was significantly more on the private, on the private side. That's my experience, but it may not be everyone's experience. And then also, I at least didn't have the conflict of do I go with the city's or do I go with my employer since I am the employer? And, but I was very pleased with the rates that the city gets for the group plan. I was impressed with that. Matter of fact, I wish we could offer it to everybody, okay? But just, just to buy into the plan, you know? But with that said, is I see that as one benefit of being on council that I didn't anticipate, is being able to buy into the plans with the city not spending a dollar to do that. I think, I see for the ability to attract future council members and try to get that wide swath of representation from our community, young, old, many different backgrounds and cultures and, you know, we all come from different backgrounds that are, that have different challenges. And I think that offering insurance can definitely help attract candidates of a wider swath of our community. I, I don't think, I do agree with one thing that I heard from a speaker is the baby steps. I kind of think that maybe what we do is something where we start with medical and do 50% of what's allowed to be contributed as a starting point. That would be a way to start easing into attracting people from the rest of our community that may be not as fortunate as someone like myself. And that would kind of show that we're also being prudent, trying to make sure that we don't, you know, it's always awkward voting for something that may apply to a benefit for yourself. I don't really like that feeling and I think none of us up here do. So that's why I'd rather look at, you know, five years or so from now or something like that. Who knows, it may be sooner than that. But, but I, I think that's where I would start, is I would start by looking at a benefit that is medical only, allowing, again, allowing council members to buy into the plans that you currently do if they want to, any further plans, but doing 50% of what we're, what we would be allowed to contribute. That's where I'd be at.
I'm not sure I understood the 50%.
If we're allowed to contribute 1,000 on the executive management, if you're allowed to contribute $1,084, I think maybe you contribute $500 towards the plan instead of 1,084. Does that make sense? Or did I misread that?
The employee plus one executive unit contribution is, is $1,064 a month.
Right. Yeah. So if it was half of that, that's allowable, right? So it'd be less than what we give to our employees?
Yes, that would be the, the maximum for employee plus one coverage. The maximum for family coverage per month for executives is $1,434 a month.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you bring up slide six, or seven, slide seven, sorry? So I, I think, I'll start with a statement, you know, I, I work for a Fortune 500 company. I, I get full medical, dental, stock options, I mean, and a variety of other, you know, so I, I'm blessed in terms of this. So this is not a benefit that I would be taking myself, you know? But I do believe that it does provide an option potentially that somebody might consider running for council. I'm not quite where Councilmember Halter is in terms of it. I do think we have a fourth option that's not listed here. But my first question is going to be in terms of the three categories there. So how many folks are in the supervisory level, rough numbers within the, the organization? And I'm going to ask the same question for management and executive level.
This is very rough.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would guesstimate 60 or so people in that unit.
Okay. And then the other two units?
Probably similar numbers in management, executive, we have 13-ish?
Okay.
Yes.
So then the fourth category that's not listed then is we have our, our line general employees.
Yes.
I think I would be more inclined that we would receive, if, if it was the council's pleasure to do this, that we would be with the line employees, you know, in terms of what they're receiving. Because then the bulk would be kind of those rough numbers, realizing that safety's a different part of it. There's probably 400 to 500 in?
The contribution amounts, with the exception of the 457, which we don't, we didn't include in the package, are actually very, very similar. I believe for our general unit employees and our professional unit employees, I believe it's equivalent to supervisory. If it's not, it's, it's very, very close.
Okay. I, I think I would be more in with the, the general employees, what they're getting in, in terms of that. That's the bulk of the, the folks that work here. And, you know, that would let us understand if we chose to take the benefit, you know, what kind of sacrifice that they're making in, in terms of covering their contributions also. So, and, and I, I understand, you know, the question is, does somebody going to run for council because of this? Maybe they are. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it wasn't something that I, you know, I, I would waive, personally, I would waive this benefit. But if it gave somebody else the option, I, I don't think, you know, it, me walking away from it takes it down, just looking at the column of 57, it's got to go down to 40. I don't know who else may or may not take it, but the 47 is a, a pretty worst-case scenario. So that's kind of where I am. Thank you.
Councilmember Campos, and I'm sorry, before I go there, Mr. Hogan, did you have something you wanted to say earlier and I missed it?
Thank you, Mayor. That's okay. I may have some clarifying questions when an actual motion is made later on, but at this moment, I'm okay.
Mr., excuse me, Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
So I didn't mean with my question to imply that someone would simply run for council to get this benefit. But the, it's not just a couple of meetings a month. Being on council is a lot of work, a lot of reading, other committees, other commissions and other things we do. For young people, some of them would have to leave a full-time job and, and go to part time or take time off. If they have a family, they would need the support of having insurance. They wouldn't run to get the insurance. But we are keeping out a lot of young people who really are interested and want to contribute by becoming council members. That was the intent of my comment. And I would encourage that we make a decision about some level of this. I don't know that we need all the choices outlined here.
Councilmember Johnson and then the deputy mayor.
Councilmember Johnson, you are muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. I, I certainly find myself in line with Councilmember McReynolds on, you know, determining what the level, what an appropriate level would be. I, I do understand Mr. Overly's position on this, but, you know, if somebody can run for whatever reason they want to run for council, they have to get elected. And what we find is that it is harder to recruit people and when we have council members, it is harder to get them to devote more time because they need to often keep working to, to get medical benefits. I lean towards just medical only. I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. But I too would be willing, I, I think it would be best if we were to, if this, this council were to make this decision rather than punt it to the next council. This was the council that decided to pursue it. And, you know, I, I think we owe it to the next council that we, you know, take whatever political hit might come from this. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Duran and then the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I agree that we don't, we don't run for the insurance, but what a gift. And councilmember Halter, you're right in some areas, because I switched over to vision and dental with the city because the plan was so good versus what I had. And, yeah, you're right. So there is some areas that are super good. And that's not a lot, that's not a big expense, you know, quite frankly, the dental vision as well as the, the employee assistance program. I, you know, I would go, and I know you're blessed, some of us aren't as blessed as you. And it's, and I think the executive, the executive level would be a great place to start, the executive unit contribution, and then including dental vision, insurance, and employee assistance. It's life, I think that's, that's great. That would be the direction I would go, would be the executive level and then include dental vision, life insurance, and employee assistance.
So you would include all four of those?
I would.
Okay. At what level?
At the executive.
Okay. Deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I am inclined to support some kind of benefits. When I saw that we are one of three out of 18 cities who do not provide a contribution for benefits, it's kind of troublesome and I, and I just, you know, this can easily be a full-time job if you let it, and it's only fair. I think that, you know, people have a choice, and to be able to have a choice of whether it's medical or vision or dental. To me, it's a way of expanding diversity to be on council, and it's a way of expanding just options for other people to be able to, to run and if elected, have something more than the $600 a month that we currently get. I too am blessed. I don't, you know, get the city's benefits. I have my own through my own full-time job. But I also lose out when I have to take vacation to do city business. So there's got to be, I think, some sort of compensation. If it's not going to be part of the stipend, it's got to come from somewhere else just to, to be able to allow, I think, other people who cannot afford to, to be without insurance or to be without some sort of benefit and be able to serve our city. That, to me, just seems fair. So I'm inclined, I like the idea of the general employees level. I hear what councilmember Duran is saying also. I'm open to that idea as well, so I just think we could, I can go either way, so. But I am inclined to certainly provide some sort of benefits for people who will be sitting up here next.
I'll throw my hat in here, so that this decision won't benefit me in any way. I'm not running again. But I think city councils need medical, dental, vision, care. I think that that's normal. When you take a look at the 18 cities on here that we got, and I'm sorry, you don't have the whole list of 18, there's, there's three cities that don't pay benefits. Two of those cities that don't pay benefits pay their city council approximately $4,000, and the other one pays them over $2,200. And I'm not recommending that for, for our city council, but I'm just saying that there's, there's different strategies, there's different HR strategies about how to compensate and how to benefit. So I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll make the motion to go the executive level and to cover medical, dental, vision, and employee assistance.
A second.
Further questions? Mr. Halter? Yes?
Okay. Just a comment is that I tend to think that my colleagues are right. I didn't, I don't really care so much if it's executive or if it's supervisory position, but I just got to put it in comparison that years ago, before the Affordable Care Act, some of us couldn't even get insurance, period. So when my company got large enough that I can offer insurance, that was a blessing. That was really something that was like unbelievable at a very high cost. And then to get elected to the city and have even a better plan that is significantly less than what I was paying in my group plan is a major, major, I'm honored to have such a gift, okay? So I just got to say is that, so what I was recommending was like half of that, you know, but I, I could see the benefit and I absolutely appreciate the, the ability to have insurance, having not had it for many years of my life. Not by choice, but because by law. And so I think that that could show once again how far we've come in our society in our lifetime, that we can actually do things like that, to use our, our benefits and our economies of scale to create, to make other people's lives even better. And that's, I'm talking about future council members. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Mr. McReynolds?
I just want to comment on, you know, I do see the slippery slope a little bit here, not in terms of the medical, dental, or vision, but this is not a full-time job. It is not intended to be a full-time job. These are full-time benefits. And I agree with councilmember Campos explicitly knowing how much time and energy you have to put in to actually do this. So it does feel like a full-time job. I get that, but I just, you know, moving beyond this, you know, I think, you know, it would start to give me pause, you know, at that point, because I don't want this to turn into a, a full-time job. You know, that is not how the city of Antura is set up, you know, in terms of our, our government. That's it. Thank you.
Is Mr. Johnson have his hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, he does.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a copy of the presentation. It wasn't in the supplemental packet or anything. Mr. McReynolds, would you be willing to make a substitute motion at one of the different levels lower than executive? I do it, but I don't have, I don't have the slide or anything.
Well, I, we don't have the, my idea was that we would be at the general employee level. We don't have that information in terms of exactly what that would, would be either.
Okay. So we have, we have executive management and supervisorial, but we don't have general? Is that correct?
Correct. My understanding is...
If I can provide some clarification, the general and professional units, I believe, are equivalent to the supervisory unit contribution amount. If it's not, it's, it's very, very close. But I believe it's equivalent.
Thank you, Mayor. In that case, I would like to make a motion that we provide medical, vision, dental, and EAP at the supervisorial level. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Let's take a vote. I'm sorry, anything am I missing? Deputy mayor?
And Ms. Barroso, is that, is that motion clear enough for you for moving forward with a resolution?
We're looking at providing medical, dental, vision, and EAP at the supervisory levels. Yes.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Clear enough for everybody? Let's take a vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One clarifying point is that not including the life insurance piece, apologies.
That's correct.
That is not including life insurance.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you for that. Then we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Duran?
No.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, Dr. Sanchez-Palacios?
Yes.
Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
Six ayes and the motion carries.
We're going to take a 15-minute break and then handle the final agenda item.
year. And that was right at the edge of what our supply was. And so while we had made some improvements in reducing demand because of the drought and the increased charges from the drought, projections at the time were that water demand would continue to increase. And so the net zero fee ordinance was intended to share the cost of developing new sources with developments that were going to be using up those new sources. That, you know, we would need to develop new sources to accommodate economic growth, both of commercial and residential and industrial uses in the city of Ventura. Now, if you give me a moment, I'm going to share my PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Can everybody see that? Is that working?
We can see your screen, Councilmember Johnson, but not in presentation mode, and we see multiple views.
Oh, okay. Well, give me one moment here. Why did that make this so difficult?
Councilmember Johnson, if you want to email it to me, I'm happy to display it here as well.
Let me try this, because it says I'm just sharing PowerPoint.
There you go. Now we can see it.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just clicked on the wrong little window. Okay. So my apologies. I knew I wasn't going to be on top of everything tonight, so I went ahead and just made bullet points out of the staff report. I trust everybody's read it. So net zero passed in 2016. And one of the components of it was a detailed analysis of the city's water supply and demand, which concluded that the city's water supplies were being used at or near full capacity. And so the problem facing the city at that time was how will we accommodate new demand as we, as we add houses, as we add businesses? And the fee proceeds were to be used to acquire additional water rights or develop water resources. It applies to all housing, including affordable housing. It applies to commercial projects and industrial on a complicated case-by-case basis. I'm not going to go into how that works, but if you, for example, have a restaurant and you wanted to add 500 square feet, the fee, the fee for that would be about $100,000. 500 new square feet, roughly, that's the size of a parklet downtown. That's about half the size of a small restaurant. I'd say most small restaurants are around 900 or 1,000 square feet, just to put all of this into perspective. So there are a number of problems with net zero, and I appreciate what the economic development strategy had to say about it. One of the key issues is it creates a pretty significant cost burden on housing. As we all know, just recently, a 100% affordable housing project was charged $340,000. They are funded through, largely through grant money. And so $340,000 in affordable housing money was paid to the water department for, for the net zero fee instead of affordable housing. For a single-family home, if you wanted to build a new one on an unused parcel, it would be $8,600. And if you wanted to build an apartment building, or condos, or townhomes on an unused parcel, the fee is about $6,000 per unit. And it's important to note that this is by the door. It's regardless of square footage or market price. It doesn't matter if you're looking to rent the apartment for $2,000 a month or $7,000 a month. And this sort of fixed cost discourages all but the high-end housing. If you are, it, it's not so simple as saying that the costs get passed on to the residents. What it does do is it decides which projects will be built and which won't. And so the projects that will be built will have enough profit to overcome those fixed costs. And so it simply is a lot less attractive to build apartments that will rent for $2,000 or $3,000 a month, when right off the bat, you're paying $6,000 for this fixed fee. It's also choking our economic development, our economic growth. It's starving our economic engine of oxygen. It discourages expansion of existing businesses, and it discourages new businesses. And we have a number of examples. We all remember 24 Hour Fitness, when it went into the mall and it was presented with a $300,000 bill, and they said, no, we're not going to do it. Mesa Rich was willing to step in and, and pay for that. But for 20 Hour Fitness, had they known about it, they simply wouldn't have opened a gym in the city of Ventura. Council recently received emails from Mother's Tacos about how after signing the lease, they sat down with city, with the city staff, and they were surprised to learn that they'd be paying a $60,000 net zero fee. And they were, they were clear, their email is included in the supplemental packet for members of the public, that it would probably have caused them to rethink exactly what they're doing. When businesses start saying that if I had known about that, I wouldn't have come to Ventura, we need to be very cautious about what we're doing. And then, this is an important note, that if the business closes, the rights that they bought with their net zero fee, those water rights, then belong to the property owner. This is important because it doesn't apply to every business in the city, and this is another problem. And that is that we have made exceptions for the businesses within Main Street Moves. As I mentioned before, adding a 500-square-foot parklet would have cost about $100,000 in net zero fees. And we all knew that no business was going to pony up $100,000 for a parklet. And we wanted the economic development for them to build those parklets. So we made an exception for those businesses within the Main Street Moves boundaries, then instead, they get to pay a monthly amortized amount that's added to their monthly leasing fee. And then if the parklet goes away, so for example, Cajun Kitchen Cafe decided they didn't want their parkland anymore, the monthly fee goes away. And as I said before, no other business in the city gets this consideration. If Mother's Tacos opens and two years from now closes because they couldn't make it, the value of the net zero fee accrues to the property owner. They can then charge more for that space. But the big issue here, while in 2016, the intentions were good, and I supported it back then, things have changed, and there is no longer a nexus between the net zero fee and the burden on our infrastructure posed by new developments. The only new water source we have coming is Water Pure. So this is really paying for Water Pure. And Water Pure must proceed regardless of development. We have now heard at the council dozens of times that we have to build Water Pure regardless of whether we need the water. And we have to use the water regardless of whether we need it because of the beneficial reuse provisions of the consent decree. So if there were no new businesses and no housing growth, we still would be proceeding with Water Pure. And in fact, if businesses started closing and people started moving out of the city of Ventura and we needed a lot less water, we still would have to go forward with Water Pure. The Water Pure project is fixing an existing deficiency in our infrastructure. It is that we have not been following federal regulations for discharge of wastewater, treated wastewater into the estuary. That has been going on. It has nothing to do with new development. So in 2016, it made sense because demand was projected to continue to keep increasing. And the thought at the time, and remember, I was at water shortage committee meetings and water department--
I beg your pardon. Go ahead.
No, thank you. No worries. Yes, Councilmember Halter and I worked together on this policy consideration, and we thank staff for getting it on an agenda, and we thank our colleagues for hearing us out on this. In 2016, the city of Ventura introduced the net zero ordinance, and at the time, it made a lot of sense. The city had, for so many years, been using, you know, anywhere between 18,000 and 20,000 acre feet of water per year, and that was right at the edge of what our supply was. And so while we had made some improvements in reducing demand because of the drought and the increased charges from the drought, projections at the time were that water demand would continue to increase. And so the net zero fee ordinance was intended to share the cost of developing new sources with developments that were going to be using up those new sources. You know, we would need to develop new sources to accommodate economic growth, both of commercial and residential and industrial uses in the city of Ventura. Now, if you give me a moment, I'm going to share my PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Can everybody see that? Is that working?
We can see your screen, Councilmember Johnson, but not in presentation mode, and we see multiple views.
Oh, okay. Well, give me one moment here. Why did I make this so difficult?
Councilmember Johnson, if you want to email it to me, I'm happy to display it here as well.
Let me try this, because it says I'm just sharing PowerPoint.
There you go. Now we can see it.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just clicked on the wrong little window. Okay. So, my apologies. I knew I wasn't going to be on top of everything tonight, so I went ahead and just made bullet points out of the staff report. I trust everybody's read it. So, net zero passed in 2016, and one of the components of it was a detailed analysis of the city's water supply and demand, which concluded that the city's water supplies were being used at or near full capacity. And so, the problem facing the city at that time was how will we accommodate new demand as we add houses, as we add businesses? And the fee proceeds were to be used to acquire additional water rights or develop water resources. It applies to all housing, including affordable housing. It applies to commercial projects and industrial on a complicated case-by-case basis. I'm not going to go into how that works, but if you, for example, have a restaurant and you wanted to add 500 square feet, the fee for that would be about $100,000. 500 new square feet, roughly, that's the size of a parklet downtown. That's about half the size of a small restaurant. I'd say most small restaurants are around 900 or 1,000 square feet, just to put all of this into perspective. So there are a number of problems with net zero, and I appreciate what the economic development strategy had to say about it. One of the key issues is it creates a pretty significant cost burden on housing. As we all know, just recently, a 100% affordable housing project was charged $340,000. They are funded largely through grant money, and so $340,000 in affordable housing money was paid to the water department for the net zero fee instead of affordable housing. For a single-family home, if you wanted to build a new one on an unused parcel, it would be $8,600. And if you wanted to build an apartment building, or condos, or townhomes on an unused parcel, the fee is about $6,000 per unit. And it's important to note that this is by the door. It's regardless of square footage or market price. It doesn't matter if you're looking to rent the apartment for $2,000 a month or $7,000 a month. And this sort of fixed cost discourages all but the high-end housing. If you are, it's not so simple as saying that the costs get passed on to the residents. What it does do is it decides which projects will be built and which won't. And so the projects that will be built will have enough profit to overcome those fixed costs. And so, it simply is a lot less attractive to build apartments that will rent for $2,000 or $3,000 a month, when right off the bat, you're paying $6,000 for this fixed fee. It's also choking our economic development, our economic growth. It's starving our economic engine of oxygen. It discourages expansion of existing businesses, and it discourages new businesses. And we have a number of examples. We all remember 24 Hour Fitness, when it went into the mall and it was presented with a $300,000 bill, and they said, "No, we're not going to do it." Mesa Rich was willing to step in and pay for that, but for 20 Hour Fitness, had they known about it, they simply wouldn't have opened a gym in the city of Ventura. Council recently received email from Mother's Tacos about how after signing the lease, they sat down with the city staff, and they were surprised to learn that they'd be paying a $60,000 net zero fee. And they were clear, their email is included in the supplemental packet for members of the public, that it would probably have caused them to rethink exactly what they're doing. When businesses start saying that, "If I had known about that, I wouldn't have come to Ventura," we need to be very cautious about what we're doing. And then, this is an important note, that if the business closes, the rights that they bought with their net zero fee, those water rights, then belong to the property owner. This is important, because it doesn't apply to every business in the city, and this is another problem. And that is that we have made exceptions for the businesses within Main Street Moves. As I mentioned before, adding a 500-square-foot parklet would have cost about $100,000 in net zero fees. And we all knew that no business was going to pony up $100,000 for a parklet, and we wanted the economic development for them to build those parklets. So, we made an exception for those businesses within the Main Street Moves boundaries, then instead, they get to pay a monthly amortized amount that's added to their monthly leasing fee. And then if the parklet goes away, so for example, Cajun Kitchen Cafe decided they didn't want their parklet anymore, the monthly fee goes away. And as I said before, no other business in the city gets this consideration. If Mother's Tacos opens and two years from now closes because they couldn't make it, the value of the net zero fee accrues to the property owner. They can then charge more for that But the big issue here, while in 2016, the intentions were good, and I supported it back then, things have changed, and there is no longer a nexus between the net zero fee and the burden on our infrastructure posed by new developments. The only new water source we have coming is Water Pure. So, this is really paying for Water Pure, and Water Pure must proceed regardless of development. We have now heard at the council dozens of times that we have to build Water Pure regardless of whether we need the water. And we have to use the water regardless of whether we need it, because of the beneficial reuse provisions of the consent decree. So, if there were no new businesses and no housing growth, we still would be proceeding with Water Pure. And in fact, if businesses started closing and people started moving out of the city of Ventura, and we needed a lot less water, we still would have to go forward with Water Pure. The Water Pure project is fixing an existing deficiency in our infrastructure. It is that we have not been following federal regulations for discharge of wastewater, treated wastewater into the estuary. That has been going on. It has nothing to do with new development. So, in 2016, it made sense, because demand was projected to continue to keep increasing. And the thought at the time, and remember, I was at water shortage committee meetings and water commission meetings. The idea was, while people reduced their water rate when we had the water shortage rates, when we were charging that premium, we all thought that there was going to be conservation fatigue and that our water use would bounce back up. Ventura, we are so fortunate that that did not happen. It broke the rule. Water conservation fatigue, you can Google that phrase, and you will find people talking about it. And then Ventura proved the exception to that rule, because demand is actually falling. And so, where once we were 18,000 acre feet, when we were at about 18,000 acre feet in 2016, this last year, our demand was 12,700 acre feet. That's about a 30% I included this chart in the policy consideration, but for tonight, I have the newer data for the last year. So, there's a vertical line there that shows when net zero was passed. The upper line, that's projections that were made in 2016, and they were the basis for introducing the net zero fee. They were a key part of the staff report. The projections were that water usage, water demand, would creep back up to 18,000 acre feet by now. But in fact, water use dropped in 2014, and it has continued to drop, and in fact, our latest number has us at 12,700 acre feet per year. Now, it's important to note that if we repeal the net zero fee, that the water, the cost of it will be passed on to the ratepayers. It's important to note that every water user pays their fair share. A new connection, if you are building a new house, if you are building a new apartment building, condos, or townhomes, you pay to hook up to the city water. The bigger the meter, the bigger your fee. Residents and businesses pay tiered rates for water, so those businesses that use more water, not only do they pay a higher bill, they pay a higher price for each gallon of water once they get up into the higher And so, Councilmember Halter and I, our recommendation to the city council is that, first, we direct staff to remove the net zero fee ordinance, and second, that we direct staff to impose an immediate moratorium on the collection of any net zero fees while finalizing the amendment to the ordinance. I'd like to hand it back over now to Councilmember Halter for any of his thoughts, and I'll be here for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I really appreciate your thoroughness, and I agree with the points that you're making. I want to say that, reiterate a couple of things, and then clarify a few others. And first is, it's true that whether we grow or not, we intend to build these new water sources. And so whether we have any new construction, any new businesses, or any new housing, which we hope we do, but if we don't, we're still going to have the same water sources, Water Pure and the associated wastewater part of that plan. The thing is this, is that we've talked a bit about the deferring fees, deferring fees for affordable housing, deferring fees for businesses in downtown. The reality is, if we defer fees, my understanding is that those deferred fees would come out of our general budget. So, if that's the case, then we're taking from other things that we desperately need to fund in order to cover the water fee that we're deferring for some of the preferred projects that we want to support. Look, I want to say that it really comes down to two things for me. It comes down to the fact that we have a housing shortage, we have an affordable housing problem in our city, just like a huge part of California. Adding an additional significant fee to every new development does not make houses more affordable. We have, we knew about 30 years ago that we were going to become an older, wealthier community. We knew that that was going to be because young people wouldn't be able to afford here, and they would move away. And we would become wealthy, because our houses would be worth a lot of money. We also knew that we were going to become, quote, "a bedroom community," because the pathway was, more and more of us in Ventura were commuting long distances to go to work, and not staying here in our local city, even though we're one of California's original cities. In fact, today, over 70% of our workforce commutes over 27 miles each direction to go to work. So, if we ever want to bring those businesses that they drive to back to Ventura, and have them part of our community, and create a sustainable whole city, and not just a bedroom community, a bedroom community for older people, then we need to encourage builders and businesses to locate in our city. Right now, even if we had the ability to have the Amazon warehouse in the city of Ventura, chances are, because of things like Water Pure, they wouldn't be here, because the costs would just be prohibitive. And I want to mention that we already have, when you build, whether it's your own single-family home or dream home, or whether it's just starting a business, or building a new commercial building, you still pay connection fees. You still pay for the fees to make sure that the infrastructure in front of you on that street is capable of providing the services, the water and the wastewater, to that building. And matter of fact, with Water Pure in particular, we're financing most of that project. So, the rates are, which we approved a few months ago, or a month or so ago, are going to, every ratepayer will be paying the rate that covers Water Pure. So, in fact, it's almost like double-dipping. If you do a net zero and have a new builder, a new building pay exorbitant fees, upwards of $800,000 to $600,000 or $700,000, it's, upon building it, it's one of the, it's basically paying for it twice. It's paying for it upfront, when you say you're going to do something in the city of Ventura, and paying for it every month for the next X number of years, probably forever, with the higher rates. So, I really feel that net zero is fundamentally inequitable, a tax that only certain properties in the city has to pay. And I think that it's time for us to really set the path for the future. What do we do with the money? I think the city was looking at, initially thinking, I think we have $6 million right now that we've collected since 2016. We're looking at $17 million over the next 10 years. That's 1.7 million a year. I really think the amount of businesses and amount of providing the housing that we desperately need that has not occurred would more than give us the revenue for a city to make up for what net zero is creating for us. But it would do it in a way that makes it much more of a sustainable city, and give us a path to that future that we all want. So, thank you.
Counsel deliberation. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. Listening to the presentation tonight, it's quite well done, but I believe there's a lot more that we need to know to make this level of decision on net zero. And I would like to suggest the moratorium to start immediately tonight, but that we pass this to the Water Commission, and maybe let economic development look at it, and see if there's ways it can be adjusted, and still work to keep us sustainable.
I'm also, I really appreciate the direction you're going in. But from a decision-making standpoint, we have a Water Commission, we have a Parks Commission, we have Arts Commission. We have to be consistent when we're making significant decisions like this, that it goes through the professionals that are on the Water Commission. I think the Water Commission needs to take a bite of this apple, and then make a recommendation to us. And I greatly appreciate the direction that the policy consideration is going in, but I think the Water Commission needs to take a bite of this apple. Deputy Mayor.
I have, can I ask questions right now?
Oh, sorry. I have a couple of questions. I appreciate Councilmember Johnson giving an overview of the net zero and how we got there. Just curious in terms of how the net zero fees are determined per project?
Sure. Let me...
Councilmember Johnson, is it okay if I turn that over to Water Management to do?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jennifer Trivo, Assistant General Manager of Water Resources. So, for the net zero fee for each new development, there are water demand factors that are based on the water usage of different types of land uses throughout the city, and that was developed through a study in 2020. And so, we use those factors. They're often in terms of acre feet per thousand square feet, unit-wise. So, you take, say, a restaurant, and you say, "How many square feet is they going to have?" And you multiply that times their water usage and times the net zero fee. And so, the net zero fee itself, though, was developed, the most recent fee, was developed through 2020 and 2021, and it uses the Ventura Water Pure as a water supply, and it looks at the cost of Ventura Water Pure at that point in time, in 2020, and the amount of water that that Ventura Water Pure was going to produce at that point, and then creates that number.
So, it varies, right?
So, the net zero fee itself currently, right now, is $26,395 per acre foot. And so then, we use those demand factors to see how many acre feet that land use would utilize. Then, you multiply that amount of water usage times the net zero fee, which is $26,395 per acre foot.
Okay. Thanks for that. And do you know how much, on average, the city receives in net zero fees?
Let me get my slide. So, cumulatively, from 2017 to 2024, we've collected about $7 million, and that translates to about $900,000 a year, but it varies greatly by year, based on what developments are coming online. Developers pay these fee at the time of building permit issuance, and so it depends on when that building permit is issued. So, for example, in 2018, we only collected $389,000, but then in 2019, there was a little over $2 million. So, it ebbs and flows. So, you can use an average, but it changes every year.
Thank you. I am also, like, I appreciate my colleagues bringing this policy consideration, because in regards to just how it's been impacting, I think, our growth in business is significant. I am kind of just also hearing from the community, or just others, that, you know, where are we going to kind of fill that gap if the net zero fee goes away, right? And that's why I'm asking, like, well, how much do we get a year on average? And it, you know, it could be something that we are going to be okay without, like, having, without having the net zero fee. I would like, I think I'm in favor of the moratorium, to kind of give staff some time, maybe, to look at and give us more information of how would, on average, the $7 million, you know, where would that come from, right? Because my concern, then, would be, you know, does it then be, does it then get added on to what ratepayers are already paying? Does it, what, how does it impact them at all, if it does, if it doesn't? I kind of like that information.
Mayor, if I may...
Councilmember McReynolds, then Councilmember Johnson?
If Councilmember Johnson wants to, I'm fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to answer questions on my, on our policy consideration here. The response to that is, it gets passed on to the ratepayers. You know, we're looking at about $36 million a year for Water Pure, and, you know, maybe a million of that would be paid, would be paid for with net zero proceeds if we kept things the way they are. But it absolutely would impact the ratepayers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Mr. McReynolds?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the, I guess, some of the policy consideration. So, we have a policy consideration that would send something back to the Water Commission. I don't understand what that gains us. I mean, at the end of the day, it's the council's decision on it, what would sending it back to a, it's not even a subcommittee of the council, it's a citizens-appointed commission with no authority. So, I guess, to Councilmember Campos's initial idea, what is the goal of sending it back to the Water Commission?
I think that we need to, we need clarity on exactly where the money's going, what it's being used for, what is the standard that allows differential treatment of different properties. All of that could be taken up by the Water Commission, and then they can present to us, so that we have more thorough information. I hate to see this all passed on to the ratepayers.
So, in terms of, if we went that direction, your idea is then we would implement a moratorium? So then, we would charge them interest while we're not, because we can't gift public funds? So, if we don't approve it, would we then charge them the net zero fee plus interest?
No. Let me, so, my thought on it was, first of all, we have a Water Commission to help us make significant water decisions, and I think it's poor governance when we pick and choose when to use the Water Commission. I think if you have significant water decisions to make, you need to use your Water Commission. And I appreciate the direction that we're going in, but I think we have a Water Commission full of water professionals that can give us some, give us their recommendation, and then we can have a robust discussion on this. And if we were to do that, I think they can get back to us by September with their recommendation. Councilmember Halter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I think, two things, is, in the whole concept of the Water Commission seeing this, is I value the expertise of the volunteers with this, with their knowledge. Usually what happens is, issues are coming forward from staff to the Water Commission, and then to the city council. I'm not sure, there's really been a policy, if something comes from council, to go back to the Water Commission and back up. Although I value their opinions, I'm just not quite sure that that's a necessary step. And one to mention is that, as far as paying for this, I have no doubt that there are so many projects that could have happened that would have happened, businesses that would have opened, businesses like Mother's Tacos, who's paid $60,000 in a fee, which would equate to having to sell over 100,000 tacos. That's a mom-and-pop store. You're talking, you're not talking a minor fee, you're talking a fee that will stop people, that has stopped people and businesses from doing the things that we want them to do to make our community a more prosperous community. So, one way or another, we're going to pay for it. We're going to pay for it by having all of our friends and family driving to other places to go to the jobs. We're going to pay for it by all of our family members living in Lancaster and Palmdale, because they can't afford to live here. So, we're going to pay for it, one way or another. And I'm saying that, let's create those projects here, and create the economic vitality that we need. And I'm fearful that if we go down that route of a moratorium, that with this out, that we may do something like this, that we may all come to an agreement to eliminate this fee and look for a better way to create taxes and fees, or create the revenue that we, mainly through economic prosperity, is what I see, and I know that's very possible, then I'm afraid of what it might do to... then I'm afraid of what it might do to people completing the building process. And the last thing I want to do is slow down our economy in our city, because we're barely keeping it going right now. And so my fear is that people will wait until that information comes back to us and not make a decision to pull the trigger and get that permit for that affordable housing project or that business that they want to open here. Anyways, just a few other thoughts. I'm not sure when we go to public comment.
Mr. McReynolds?
I wanted to revisit the Water Commission on it. So we're going to send it back to them, and we're going to ask them to analyze with a tax being collected and with a tax not being collected, and what it would do to the rate? Or?
So I think we'd send it back to the Water Commission and have them take a look at a policy consideration about repealing net zero fees. Have them take a look at it, make a recommendation to us. It's one of the most significant water issues that has been put in front of the City Council in the last four years.
And I apologize, I'm tripping on that part of it. Because we're either asking them to make a recommendation to collect a tax or not. Is that what they're being asked to do?
Well, they're asked, take a look at repealing the net zero fee.
Right. So it's a, they're going to come back with, if we, if we repeal the fee, the rate's going to go up by X. If we don't, the rate's going to stay at X. Is there any other choice that they have? I mean, I don't understand why we're sending it to ask them a decision that we need to make, I guess, is?
Because we have a Water Commission that usually, in my four years here, they have given us recommendations on water policy and water issues.
Okay, I guess I don't see the, that, but, okay.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Schrader. And Councilmember McReynolds, if I may explain a little bit briefly on the history. The policy originally came forward as something requested by City Council, and it was in 2014, and phrased as an in-lug fee at that time. And City Council decided not to adopt it, and instead created a Water Commission and asked them to study the issue, to have it be brought back to City Council. So the Water Commission was formed around that time. There were some precursors to it that looked at other issues, droughts and rates and what have you. But that's when it was formed. And the Water Commission studied the policy for over a year and really looked at, what's the appropriate way it should be set up? Recommended an ultimate ordinance and policy to City Council. And then, in the summer of 2016, City Council adopted it. I think what the Water Commission could do now is look at the information presented tonight and see if, if their views have changed since back in 2016, as Councilmember Johnson has explained. And maybe they would recommend not having the policy anymore, or maybe they might recommend some changes to the policy and how it's being implemented based on, you know, the last, how many years, eight years of it being in place.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, thinking through this, first of all, I want to say, Councilmember Johnson, great job on your presentation. Thank you for being so thorough and bringing out the points that you did. Same with you, Councilmember Halter, I appreciate that very, very much. I'm kind of wondering the same thing that Mr. Councilmember McReynolds is asking. You know, we could look at that, it's going to, they're going to, we're going to come up with the same, you know, it's going to be this or it's going to be that. What we really need to look at is economic vitality. What we really need to look at is over these, since 2016, how many businesses have we lost because of that? How many, how many people didn't want to open up a business here? I'm just wondering, how many people, when they hear, if this, if this goes through, how many people are going to go, dang, it's gone, let's go, let's build it? Are we going to have an economic burst of vitality that's going to take place? I mean, that's, who's going to study that? I mean, we already know that businesses are not coming here because of this fee. So I just want to make that point before you go to public comment.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, is that your hand up?
Yes, it is, thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with Councilmember McReynolds and Duran on this one. I appreciate all the work that the Water Commission has done. The questions that have been asked, I thought I'd addressed. Where the net zero fees are going is to Water Pier. It would be paid for by a slight increase in the water rates. As you know, I have suggested we should just scrap the state water intertie, which would more than make up for the, you know, 2% increase that it would add to, not to a bill, but to the increase to a bill. Somebody did ask about economic development, I appreciate Councilmember Duran bringing that up. You know, if the city manager, if Deputy City Manager Connors wanted to speak on this, if Meredith Hart was around, I'm sure they could speak about how they have run into this when it comes to economic development. There are two issues that I want to point out. The first is, that when we have a fee like this, and it does discourage businesses, by having that fee, they don't come here, so they don't pay the fee. But the bigger loss is to our economy. It's, it's to jobs, it's to economic growth, it's to the wealth of our community. We're talking about, you know, a million dollars a year, and that is a lot. But we're talking about a big impediment to our economic growth, as I'm sure our economic development team would attest to. The second thing, let's make it three things. The second thing is, I'm going to guess that the water staff wants the water department charging this fee. And we could hear from them. My concern about this is really the economic development side of it. And then last, again, there is a reason that we cannot charge a fee without there being a nexus, a close connection between what we are charging them for and what we're spending the money on. We have to build Water Pier regardless of any new development. We're not building it to meet new demand. I'd like to share my screen again, I have a couple backup slides. So our growth is projected to be really quite minimal. This is from the latest Comprehensive Water Resources report. And so what we see here is the expectation that our demand is going to go up by about 129 acre feet per year. And that's how we get to these ever-increasing numbers. Again, you know, every Comprehensive Water Resources report has projected steady increases in water usage, even though, in reality, water usage has dropped dramatically. So 128 acre feet per year through 2030. So if we do the math on this, 128, and we say, where would we get to the point where we, all that would be using up the water from, that we currently have? This is exempting Water Pier. Our current supply of water is 17,550 acre feet per year. We're using about 12,750. We have ample water right now. So we project it to be down to 1400, and 14,596 acre feet per year projected in 2030. That's the, I'm sorry, that's the demand. So if we subtract the projected demand for 2030 from our current supply in 2024, we get that we have a surplus of about 2,954 acre feet per year, about 3,000 acre feet of surplus water. Again, this is not considering Water Pier, which is going to add another 4,000 acre feet per year to our portfolio. So if we go back to that number from the Comprehensive Water Resources report, where we expect 128.8 acre feet per year of growth in new demand annually, then if we continue to grow at that, and we have currently 2,954 acre feet per year of surplus water, if the new demand is 128.8, it will take us 23 years beyond 2030 till we have exhausted our current supply that we have today. That's the year 2052. And we are charging affordable housing projects on the chance that, come 2052, we may not have enough water. This is, again, is just the current supply. It is not including 4,000 acre feet per year from Water Pier. And so we get into really a question that is going to come down to an attorney issue, which is whether or not we can demonstrate that we have that nexus. Well, once that nexus exists, I would suggest that nexus no longer exists, and it is inappropriate for us to take this money from developers. In a Supreme Court decision?
Can you add this up a little bit, you're over your time?
Yeah. Yes, Mayor, though I will note that staff has an unlimited amount of time when they bring us presentations. So if there is not a nexus, the way the Supreme Court puts this, the way Antonin Scalia put this, is what we have is an out-and-out plan of extortion. That's what we're dealing with here. These are not topics for the Water Commission, these are topics for the council to deal with. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, then out to the public, your public comment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have 14 speaker cards submitted on this item. Our first speaker is Brian Pendleton, followed by Stephanie Caldwell, followed by Sky Sonner. Speakers will have three minutes. Feel free to line up as we call your names.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schrader, Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios, and council members. My name is Brian Pendleton, I'm the general manager for the Ventura Port District. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the council for discussing the policy consideration to repeal the net zero fee, and urge the council to adopt both recommendations identified in the July 16, 2024 report. I provided written communication in advance of tonight's meeting with details regarding the burden the fee places on existing and new businesses at Ventura Harbor, as well as our pipeline of projects designed to continuously improve the harbor itself. A recent experience that I shared with you in that letter saw the reuse of an existing building, an existing building at Harbor Village, being assessed with a net zero fee of $92,000. This fee was 10 times more than the building permit fee to construct the improvements at the location. This business plans to bring 25 to 30 new jobs at the harbor. In order for that business to proceed, the Port District had to ensure that it would pay the fee to the water department. The information that we have in that letter is for you and for your use as you continue your deliberations. As I noted in the letter, the financial impact statement in the report discusses the amount of net zero fees to be collected between 2025 and 2034, which you've discussed in detail tonight. However, a couple of council members have noted, and I noted in my letter to you, what's missing in this is a statement with regard to lost opportunities. Lost opportunities for jobs, revenues, because of a lack of reinvestment into existing space as a result of this net zero fee. At the district, as the district and its local business tenants improve the harbor, it results in increased visitation with new job opportunities and increased revenues to the city. Regarding improvements, I continue to receive compliments regarding positive changes at the harbor by many of you on council as well as the community. Regarding the taxes generated by improvements and visitation that directly benefit the city, this includes property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, business license revenues, and as was pointed out earlier during the presentation, connection fees, and building permit fees as well. These revenues can be used by City Council, obviously, for a variety of projects and programs that it deems to be priorities throughout the community. In conclusion, I support the repeal of the net zero fee ordinance and immediate moratorium on the collection of any net zero fees. Thank you very much for your time.
Stephanie Caldwell, Sky Sonner, Karen Flock, Brad Golden.
Good evening. First of all, I am so grateful for Councilmember Halter and Johnson recognizing the need to bring this policy consideration forward. Net zero has been in effect since 2016 and has been a negative impact on our city's competitiveness ever since then. Back in 2016, in the summer, I was against the adoption of net zero water fees. At the time, I spoke about the negative impact that this would have on housing development and business growth and development in our community. Many other speakers that night also addressed concerns about the costs and the negative impact on business, and ultimately predicted that the city would simply not collect anywhere near the amount of fees that they had projected, since much of the investment would halt. Unfortunately, council moved forward with this flawed policy. Fast forward eight years later, and here we are, still talking about the negative impacts of net zero. Entrepreneurial spirit is alive and well here in Ventura. Frequently, investors come forward considering their idea or a great plan of opening a business here, fueled by a solid business plan, sound experience, and optimistic hopes for future success. Our friends and neighbors decide to open an ice cream shop, a pizza parlor, a taco shop, a brewery, or a restaurant. Fast forward, usually after their lease has been signed, they are midway through the permit process when they get the unexpected news that the city will be leveraging a net zero water fee on them. This is typically when I get the phone call. These incredulous business owners, feeling blindsided, which is the word they use, and at their wits' end, trying to understand what the fee is for, how it's calculated, and what their options are to not have to pay it. Most often, I hear from them, and they tell me, I wish I would have known this because I never would have signed my lease. For a small business, $60,000 for a taco shop, as Councilmember Halter mentioned, is 100,000 tacos they have to sell just to cover the fee. That means every resident in Ventura needs to buy a taco before their fees are covered. For a small restaurant, $92,000 in net zero fees, it's a deal breaker. Back when 24 Hour Fitness leased the old Barker Brothers building at the mall, a building that had been abandoned for decades, they were forced to pay $311,750 in net zero fees alone. That's 650 annual memberships they had to sell just to cover that cost. We know a strong and vibrant business community means a strong and vibrant city. I beg of you to do the right thing, taking a stand for business is taking a stand for your constituents. Please do not kick the can down the road, support this policy consideration, and remove the net zero scar from Ventura forever.
Hello, Mayor and council. I'm a business owner, a developer, Chair Sadiqay Mac, Chair of the Economic Development for downtown, for the DVP. In Sadiqay, God, we've been trying to build this project for so long. I recently had meetings with New Line, with McCarthy Homes, and they said, hey, we'd love to do some low-income housing, we'd love to do some building out here. And they start looking at the net zero fees, and they're just like, man, like, this area's not high-income enough to do any of these build-outs. So this is, we ran through the problem, first with zoning, we rezoned it. They said, now, now it's rezoned, now you need to get water. You guys, thank you so much for voting, for getting us water. And now, when I talk to anybody, they're like, these fees are going to prevent you from building what you want to build. I talk to business owners every day, and they're talking about how, why did I go to downtown Ventura? So why did I go to Ventura? This city doesn't like businesses, they say they do, but their actions don't follow it. And all I'm saying is, we say we love businesses, we say we love And all I'm saying is, we say we love businesses, we say we love small businesses, and now's the time to support us. Thank you.
Karen Flock. Brad Golden. Trace Simi. And Carrie Manley.
Good evening. My name is Mayor Schrader, and members of the City Council, my name is Karen Flock. I'm the Real Estate Development Director with the Housing Authority of the City of San Bueno Ventura. We support the policy consideration to repeal the net-zero fee. As stated in the report, this fee has a disproportionate impact on affordable and lower-cost housing. The Water Pure project must be built regardless of future demand, and actual demand is significantly below projections. Just as an example, the Housing Authority's Valentine Road Permanent Supportive Housing Project, which is the reuse of an existing building, is being charged a net-zero fee of $288,000. It isn't a deal killer for us, but it's just another additional cost that we'll have to find funding to cover. In particular, it doesn't seem right to charge the fee for an existing building. So I particularly sympathize with businesses that are going into existing buildings that are being assessed this fee. The city is making major and important improvements to our water system that will benefit all of us. We know the funding has to come from somewhere. Please reevaluate where it comes from. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and staff. My name's Brad Golden. I too support the repealing of this net-zero fee. I was here in 2016 when it first passed, and I don't think we need to send it back to the Water Commission. I did the math, and based on Councilmember Johnson's presentation, we'd be losing maybe a million dollars a year on a $36 million outgoing. That's a 3% number. If we're going to have our rates tripled in the next god knows how long, another 3% is literally a drop in the bucket. So we can recover that fee no problem. The fee just hasn't worked the way it was, I think, the intention of it. It's collected about half of what they initially expected. It has definitely increased the cost of housing, and definitely, like we've heard, increased the cost of visiting. I mean, seriously, 100,000 tacos to pay for just the net-zero fee. I mean, that's absolutely insane. I have no idea. I mean, they actually sell a day, but just try to do that number in your head. So I'm in the commercial real estate business. I have been in many meetings when people analyze moving their business, buying a building, building a building here in Ventura, and they get to that fee if they can possibly figure it out, which is really difficult. And they move onto Oxnard or Camarillo or Santa Paula, or don't expand their business, what they're doing here. I've seen it happen. What scares me more is the times I haven't seen it happen, when that number is being analyzed somewhere in a boardroom, somewhere in a high level. They do the number, we don't even get interviewed for the job. We're fired before we get interviewed. And that happens, and that's even more scary. So I would encourage you to please repeal this net-zero fee and initiate the moratorium immediately. Thank you.
My name's Trace. I work for Vistreal Public Charter School. We're currently located on Telegraph Road, right by Snapper Jack's Tacos. We were in the old Sullivan Learning Center space. We're relocating to the old Al Capoco Restaurant, 725 South Victoria. And the net-zero water usage bill came up for us. It's for a nonprofit school. It's $528 per student. We have 260 kids, so it's $137,280, $137,280 in fees. And again, in my head, I'm trying to understand the logic behind that. We're currently located less than a mile, as a crow flies, from our current location, serving kids that live in the community, that are only using the restrooms in the school. So to be hit with that kind of development fee is harsh for a nonprofit. Thank you.
I too am from Vistreal Charter High School. I am the superintendent. My name is Corinne Manley, and I won't repeat what Trace just said, but just to reiterate the fact that we are serving primarily opportunity youth in our community. We've been here since 2011, and moving a mile and a half up the road is $130,000 that could go towards our Ventura opportunity youth, could hire an additional counselor, an additional teacher, provide much-needed resources for our students. So I too support and encourage the council to repeal the net-zero fee. Thank you.
Next speaker is Luis Lampara, followed by Helen Aloyan, followed by Spencer Noran, George Amandola, and Robert Aranio.
Good evening. Luis Lampara, Ventura County Colab. I want to share some statistics that kind of outline where the county, and by extension the city, have found themselves since 2016. One, Ventura County is the least affordable region in the nation to buy a home. This is due to our high housing prices combined with our low overall wages. Two, since 2015, California's economy grew by 44%. Same-time period, Ventura's economy shrank by over 12%, negative 12%. Ventura's economy is near the very bottom of the state rankings. Three, nationally, government permitting and development fees for housing development typically represent 4% of a home's cost. In Ventura, it's 20% of a home's cost. This is due to things like the city's net-zero fee, five times the national average. Housing affordability is unachievable as long as the cost of a home is 20% more because of government fees. Was my time correct?
You still have 51 seconds.
Okay. These county-wide statistics mirror economic trends here in our city. I have heard businesses say, "We want to expand, but we'll do it someplace else." Ventura's facing not just a housing crisis, but a business growth and wage crisis.
Apologies, you have a minute and 30 seconds. Go ahead and proceed. Sorry about that.
I just cut a whole bunch of stuff, so. All right, sorry, I'm going to back up a little bit. I apologize. These county-wide statistics mirror economic trends here in our city. As someone working with businesses throughout the county, I have heard a consistent message. Businesses want to expand, but they're going to neighboring cities like Camarillo or Thousand Oaks, so they can avoid the city's cumbersome permitting process and the net-zero fee. Local businesses and residents are under a burden far above the national average, hindering economic sustainability and driving up the cost of living for our community. We must correct Ventura's course and support economic growth and affordability for our residents. That includes removing fees and costs that impose undue burdens on our businesses. As you've heard tonight, the net-zero fee is a burden. The Water Commission and other committees are not responsible for setting the city's policies. You, the City Council, hold that responsibility exclusively. You are responsible for making a correction when a policy recommendation from one of the city's committees turns out to have unintended consequences, and that appears to be where we are today. Tonight, you can take a decisive step towards fostering an environment where businesses can thrive, residents can afford to live, and our community can prosper. Please vote to repeal the net-zero fee.
Helen Aloyan. Spencer Noran. George Amandola. Robert Aranio.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Helen Aloyan. Today, I speak as a private citizen, but I will say, I am speaking for my pro bono clients. They don't pay me any money to be here, but I anticipate there will be a lot more after I say the following words. So I do a lot of free consulting for disadvantaged businesses within our city, a lot of them from different districts, not just from the West Side. And the same way, I would advise my for-profit clients, you know, I tell them to look really deeply into all of the requirements, all of the hoops you have to jump through, through the Community Development Department, but also really examine that fee schedule, and what we've found most of the time, that it is a deal-breaker. And we are quite frankly strangling our locals here. And after seven years of consulting for private sector, two years of pro bono consulting, I can't just sit in the back and be quiet when there's so many people that come to me for support, and things that are like big and airy, like the net-zero fee. I can't do anything as an individual to help, other than stand before you today, asking for your ear, to listen to not just the business community, but the growing entrepreneurs that are looking to establish themselves in this city. I mean, think about my generation. People like me with zero generational wealth, we have to not only save up enough for a chance of buying a house, but also pinch our pennies so we can start a business. And I commonly, in front of you guys, for ADUs, I mean, an ADU could hit with a $4,000 bill at the end of the day, at the end of the process. To me, it's not fair. I think we should be affirmatively furthering fair economic development opportunities, the same way we do for housing, affordable housing as an economic development strategy. And I think the lowest-hanging fruit for the city that was identified in the economic development strategy is at least putting the moratorium on the net-zero fee. I mean, the economic strategy listed it as an administrative and infrastructure challenge, and is part of the built environment as a threat. Like, we can unbuild that from our environment, and we can make that decision to support our local businesses. It's not a question of water and sending it back to the Water Commission. It is quite frankly a, do we want to sever the net-zero relationship with economic development and the Water Pure project? I would say yes. Cut that tie. It is too important for us to remove barriers like this from strangling our businesses. So if I can appeal to you as a private citizen who volunteers a lot of her time helping businesses for free, to just consider a little bit more deeply the policy consideration in front of you guys, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, VPD, translation. Helen said that very well. Thank you, Helen, and she does give her time for free for a lot of entrepreneurs. Helen, you're fantastic. Thank you. Oof, politics is being played again in Ventura. Here we go for a full-circle conversation. I'm completely in agreeance with Councilmember Halter and Johnson to remove net-zero water fee. I've said it maybe a dozen times over the last six years. Always been in favor of economic development and moving Ventura forward in a responsible growth way. But here's some of my concerns. It's no longer a can, it's a dumpster. The dumpster can't be kicked anymore because net zero needs to go. And Mayor, with respect to what you said about, an example about the Water Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, as we all know, because I remind you every time, I was a former Parks and Rec Commissioner. And Mayor, during my two and a half years on that time, being only a recommending body, we had one recommendation that we gave to council during that two and a half years. Do you know what it was? It was Branca Vista Park. And we spent over a couple of months on Branca Vista Park and the art installation, different art installations, and we gave an awesome recommendation. What'd you do with that recommendation, Mayor? You just poo-pooed it. You threw it to the side. You didn't use it. So the first time I'm on the commission, you gave me one job, and you said, "No." And that wasn't just to me, that was to all of us. So if it goes back to the Water Commission now, how do we even know what you're going to do? Are you going to agree with them? Are you going to disagree with them? Because that's what you did before. And that's what I'm tired of seeing in the city of Ventura, is this wishy-watchy approach to what direction we're going. And Councilmember Johnson and Halter, unfortunately, you're part of this as well, because you've been on council for almost four years now. Why now are we looking to remove that net-zero water fee? I would love to hear that from you, Councilmember Halter. Why didn't you go on the last few years? We heard Councilmember Johnson talk about his projections of water, how he was maybe misperceived about the direction of water is going. But then again, we're building housing everywhere, but our population's not going up over the next 10 years? How's that possible? Our population, housing being built, community members say everywhere, housing, apartments, going to the East Side. You guys talk about building more and more housing, but the population's not increasing, and our water usage isn't increasing. I'm not seeing how that fits in. We need more water, yes. State water connection as soon as possible. Here's a last hypocrisy for you. Ventura Water Pure Project, the federal decree, right, to save the river mouth that nobody brings scientific evidence to what we're actually saving. Is it the snowy plover? Is it the fish? Is it the sand quality? What is it? Because right now, the hypocrisy is so far and great that we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars to save this river that we have hundreds of individuals living in today and tonight, using defecation, trash, treating the river like the absolute playground of trash, and out there cleaning it up every week. So stop being hypocrites and clean the river. Let's go.
George Amandola, followed by Robert Aranio, then Ben Koenig, and our final speaker, Amy Cherry.
Hello. Good evening, everyone again. George Amandola, resident, District 2. And I previously served on the Water Commission, and I resigned. I'm really restating this for the members of the audience, more so than council. The reasons for why I resigned were published in the vreg.org, and if you Google my name, you can see my actual letter. I had disagreements with the Water Commission. The Water Commission basically is made up of water industry professionals. Some now have moved on and are working for the city of Ventura, while another was appointed, who is the spouse of a member employee of the Public Works Department. So what is the Water Commission going to do? While it's a novel idea to kick it back to the Water Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, if you replay Garrett Hart Hubner's last statements when he was the chair of the Water Commission, he said that the Water Commission lacks people that understand economics, and he would hope that people with economics experience will serve on the Water Commission. Last week, you heard from Mr. Fulton, who was our former mayor. You guys hired him to do an economics study. In that SWOT analysis he provided, net zero was identified as a threat to the city of Ventura. You guys paid in commission for him to deliver this study. You heard it last week. And in the opportunities, basically, he identified that growth of development of commercial buildings, industrial, residential housing was a great opportunity for the city of Ventura. I have a new business. Years back, I had a telecommunications business. I raised $35 million to develop a data center in this town. I couldn't get the attention I needed from former councils. I couldn't get support from staff. They didn't understand it. My investors aged out. I did not develop that data center, but I propelled the conversation forward, and that's why you have some initiatives taking place through my efforts, trying to pivot my commercial business. Now, I have a new opportunity, but I guarantee you that when I sit in front of my board of directors, who invested a lot of money in my business, we're going to have a real conversation about where to locate our business. And if I have to pay the net-zero fee, we're not going to be in Ventura. And you're going to rely on the Water Commission to provide a political cover for your decision, Mayor? That is absolutely the wrong decision. Thank you very much.
Robert Aranio, followed by Ben Koenig and Amy Cherry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, my name is Robert Aranio, and I'm the chair of the Water Commission. It's a wonderful conversation. This is really good. I especially appreciate Councilmember Halter and Councilmember Johnson for bringing this up and for us having the opportunity to have this and receive this input. I'm not in favor or against this going forward. What I am asking and what my concerns are specifically is a knee-jerk reaction. We've heard some very passionate testimony tonight, and we saw a very good PowerPoint presentation. Unfortunately, the PowerPoint presentation is not complete. It doesn't take into account the adjudication that's currently going on right now in the Oxnard Plain that may impact about 40% of our allocation of water over there. It's being looked at in a lens of two very wet years that have certainly contributed to the lack of demand, because people aren't using irrigation, and you're not having to water the trees that are in your area for orchards. Those will give you false readings. What I'm asking for the same thing that these individuals are, give us a chance to look at it and run this through and do what we do. As the commission has four water professionals on there, two of us, which have worked with net zero before in other districts and are familiar with it, let us chew on it for two months and really understand it and weigh in the other things that were not considered tonight. Please do not make a knee-jerk reaction. I don't know where it's going to come out. I really- I really don't. I've heard the discussion tonight, and I agree with a lot of the points that are brought up, but you're only getting half the information at this point. Please give us the opportunity to do our job. Thank you.
Ben Koenig, Ben, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Councilmembers Johnson and Halter, for pioneering this effort. My name is Ben Koenig, owner of Mother's Tacos. I come to this meeting as a humble outsider, admittedly not having full grasp of all the decisions and politics that have led us here. But perhaps this makes my vantage point worth sharing. As we heard tonight in a recent roundtable that Economic Development was so kind to organize, a representative at the Water Division brought to my attention, for the first time, that we would be subject to a roughly $60,000 net zero water fee to receive our building permit. This fee places the burden of past mismanagement on future businesses, and if not addressed immediately, it will only act to stifle creativity, stifle development, and stifle the entrepreneurial spirit in Ventura for years to come. Upon hearing of the $60,000 price tag, to say I was surprised, blindsided, horrified, puzzled, would be an understatement. My team and I have been a part of restaurant builds in New York City, the Napa Valley, Walnut Creek, Palo Alto, and over the last year, we have been canvassing for locations all throughout Northern and Southern California, and even as far as Dallas, Texas. We have never heard of something like this being levied on a small business. We didn't even think to ask. Since being asked to speak tonight, I have since been in touch with business owner friends of mine from Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, San Luis Obispo, and elsewhere, and this fee is a completely foreign concept to all of them. For a small business like ours, this sort of fee is extremely cost prohibitive. Had we had prior knowledge, it would have weighed heavily in our decision, in our decision-making to bring our business to Ventura in the first place. At a minimum, it would have altered the types of spaces we would have looked at within the city and altered the way in which we negotiated our lease. Sadly, this fee cast doubt on our desire to bring more of our group's concepts to Ventura. And if the policy remains in force, it will weigh negatively in our thinking as we explore growth opportunities along the 101. Our one business hopes to bring over 25 new jobs to the city, to the city of Ventura, and over $200,000 per year in new sales tax. I really think the wind can be at Ventura's back right now, but ludicrous and costly fees like this will absolutely impede the progress the city is trying to make as more small business owners are made aware. Sending this back to the Water Commission is a classic bureaucratic stall tactic and would allow this body to shirk their decision-making responsibility. The City Council is the governing body. You are the elected officials, and you should be able to make this decision right now. I strongly encourage this body to reverse the net zero fee for the good of the future of Ventura. Thank you for listening.
And our final speaker this evening is Amy Cherry. Amy, we're moving you over now, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Councilmember Johnson's adorable kitties. Amy Cherry speaking. A few things. First, my personal views. I agree on not hooking up to the state water, just so that we could send our water to the Central Valley to support almond growth. And a quick clarification, if you were selling your tacos for 50 cents each, you would need to sell 100,000 tacos. If you're selling them for $6, it's only 10,000 tacos. But I am here to read a letter from Bob Guthrie, and it states, Dear Mayor Schroeder and Councilmembers, I would support modifying the net zero fee, but do not support eliminating it entirely. It does seem that some entities are unfairly burdened with the fee. However, certain entities should pay for the new demands that they will place on our water system, just as existing users, existing users have done so over time. For example, existing residents and businesses have paid for the current infrastructure through their water bills without a net zero fee. A new entity will be able to use the existing infrastructure without paying anything towards the original capital cost. Yes, the new entity pays to connect to that existing infrastructure, but they did not pay for the infrastructure itself. I would suggest lowering or eliminating the net zero fee on low-income housing. I could also see eliminating it for public-serving entities, schools, religious facilities. Lowering the rate for office buildings and medical facilities and assisted living may also make sense, but for all other businesses and residential use, paying the net zero fee seems warranted. To address the large capital outlay, the fee could be changed to a monthly surcharge on their water bill. The fee would be eliminated after a period of time, perhaps 10 years. This would also eliminate the issue of Alessi paying the entire fee only to relocate relative short time afterwards. Thank you for your time, Bob Guthrie. And thank you for your time, Amy Cherry. Good night.
That concludes public comment on item number 16.
Councilmember Compos, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say I didn't have any notion of the slide presentation coming before us tonight. And what hit me hardest was saying, eliminating the net zero fee, it can just be paid by the ratepayers. And because I know the struggle already of the ratepayers in my neighborhood and many in the East Side lower-income buildings, I really struggled to completely cancel the net zero fee. I understand what the businesses are going through. So many people stood and said the word they were blindsided. Somehow, we're doing something wrong by not letting them see upfront what's coming. And as Mr. Guthrie stated, or in his letter, you know, maybe we can make adjustments. My idea of going to the Water Commission was to, to set up a better way than the ratepayers absorbing all of this, because my community already is not using water because they can't afford it. Thank you.
Mr. Durant.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. And then Mr. Durant.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first, I'd like to thank Stephanie Caldwell and everybody who spoke, but I want to thank Stephanie Caldwell in particular. It was, it was four years ago when I was running for this, and until I sat down and had a long discussion with Ms. Caldwell, I supported the net zero fee. She was the one who really explained to me how it was hampering economic development. To address in a, Mr. Norance's comments as well as Mr. Aranio's, he asked, "Why now?" And is this coming out of nowhere? I have been advocating for repealing the net zero fee since I was elected.[1097.28]
Testing, testing. Councilmember Johnson, if you can hear us, do you mind putting in the chat if you can hear us? Councilmember Johnson?
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, testing. Mine works. One, two, three. One, two, three. Testing, 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 testing. Testing, testing, testing. 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 Okay, let's give it one more try, Councilmember Johnson. If this doesn't work, I might ask you if you can log off and log back in. It might have been something happened during the power drop since you stayed connected. Go ahead and try it one more time. Okay, we're not hearing you. Do you mind trying to log off and log back in? And we'll hang tight. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, just hang tight. We're resetting the audio upstairs as well. Go ahead and try and unmute yourself, Councilmember Johnson. So the folks on WebEx can hear Councilmember Johnson in the room and upstairs in our audio. We cannot hear Councilmember Johnson. And just one last sound check for audio upstairs. Manny, can you confirm if you can hear the audio in WebEx? Can you give me an up and down on the camera? Okay, there appears to be some difficulty in getting WebEx audio into the room.
Mr. City Attorney, if we can't connect with Mr. Johnson, can he give us a thumb up or a thumb down for a vote and we're okay with that? If somebody were to make a motion?
No. No.
Um, no.
I can hear him.
I can hear him.
Where?
I don't know.
Councilmember Johnson, can you say something again?
Yep.
He could go in, he could hold on the microphone phone and make us comment on it.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson, try one more time.
Hello, hello.
Okay, we can hear you. We're all set.
Okay, backing up. First, I want to thank Stephanie Caldwell in particular. I want to thank all of everybody who spoke. But it was about four years ago when I was entering the race for city council that I sat down and had a long talk with Stephanie Caldwell. And she convinced me that what an impediment the net zero fee is to our growth economically and in terms of housing. And I also want to thank Trace from the Charter School. I think an example of that, that example that just moving a business half a mile, it doesn't add to any demand on our water supply, but they're being charged as if they are. This goes to a bigger issue. And this comes to some of the comments from Councilmember Campos and also from Mr. Guthrie. The fact is that we can't change the net zero fee to exempt affordable housing. We can't make it less for any commercial use that we want to encourage. That's just not legal under Prop 218. What we could do is we could say, any affordable housing project would still have to pay it, but we will pay for it out of the general fund. Now, one of the tricks about this is it would have to be for every affordable housing unit. It couldn't be on a case-by-case basis, because if it were on a case-by-case basis and we granted that to a housing authority project and not a people's self-help housing project, then we'd be talking about a gift of public funds. The fact is that this is a very clumsy axe. It's not a scalpel. It is a clumsy axe. So I do appreciate what Mr. Aranio was saying about there is something missing. I'm going to share another slide. And I think it's important that my colleagues see this, because this is a little contrary to what we've been told many times. Yes, we are under adjudication, but we will be. This is from United Water Conservation District. They have a number of projects going on already. The Freeman Expansion is already going on. The Extraction Bay and Brackish Water Treatment Project is in development. This is their projection for what is going to be happening in the Oxnard Plain through 2045. They see a ramp up in the aquifers reaching sustainable use by 2040. We're not the only ones who are developing new water supplies. And again, nothing in this would change any of the water supply. It wouldn't slow down water pure. We'd still have the same water supply projects going on. One of the things it would do is it would help us sell more water. And when you consider that we already have 3,000 acre feet surplus each year and water pure is going to add another 4,000 to it, we need to sell as much water as we can. At a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings ago, somebody asked the question, why are the water rates in Santa Barbara so high? Well, a big part of that had to do with when they built that D-SAL plant, they overbuilt their supply. They built it and then they didn't put it to use. And then when they rolled it back out and kind of de-mothballed it and got it started again, that was expensive as well. And the costs for that were a lot higher than initially projected. Overbuilding your capacity for water is a problem. We are not in a position where we need to figure out how to decrease demand. We're just not. So the bigger point here, oh, so to Councilmember Campos, this doesn't set the rates for anything. Council will be the deciding body for setting water rates. I probably won't be here. I know I won't be here. Council should hold the line so that the people who are using less water, that they are the lowest water users, they should see less of an increase than people at the higher levels. You know, I would do everything I could to keep them where they're at and see bigger increases higher up in the water usage. And Councilmember Campos, I apologize that I didn't share the PowerPoint. I wasn't planning on having a PowerPoint, but I put together the PowerPoint this afternoon when I was afraid that I was not going to be able to be here tonight and I was going to send it off to Doug Halter. So, and last, a couple of other things, and I apologize because I've lost my train of thought. And this is a response to Mr. Guthrie. You know, I take the issue about existing and new users. I take that into consideration, but we are looking at a project that is completely financed. And there really hasn't been an outlay by existing users. It would be different if this was a project where we paid 50% of it upfront, but we're not doing that. It's almost completely financed. And Spencer Noran asked, why now? I will point out that, you know, I've been advocating for this since I was elected. I brought it up at our first full-setting meeting, but there had to be will on council. I also appreciate all the discussions I've had with Brick Connors and Meredith Hart and Bill Ayo about the instances where businesses come to the city and they decide not to expand because of the net zero fee. So those are some of my answers to the questions. I greatly appreciate my colleagues listening to this. Again, to me, this is an economic development issue, not a water issue. We're not changing anything in how the water department operates. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience as well. Mr. Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Campos, I am in agreement with Councilmember Johnson in regards to the rates, but I wanted just to remind you, I know you're trying to help the residents on the West End, and the best thing to do to help them on the West End is to get affordable housing built, to get businesses built, to get new jobs. You heard 25 jobs from Mother's Tacos. You heard 25 jobs in the harbor. You want to help? That's a great way to help, is we get rid of this fee so we can start building and there can be some economic vitality in our city. Yeah, so, I don't, Mr. Councilmember Johnson, did you want to make a motion?
I still have Deputy Mayor, yeah. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, thank you to everyone who stayed here and gave their comments. After hearing everyone speak, it seems counterintuitive that we have this net zero fee. And, you know, my hope is that with this, should this be removed, that we will have businesses coming to Ventura and investing in Ventura, and perhaps we can make up the loss of net zero fees through that way, right? Via new businesses and new developments here. Because clearly, it's been impacting both affordable housing and businesses that will help us economically. And so I think I would be, I will be supporting the policy consideration after hearing the public and after hearing some of my comments, some of my council colleagues' comments. So for me, it's hearing members from the Vista Real Charter School. I've met with some of their board members as well and some other businesses as well, and it's just counterintuitive. It doesn't make sense that we're hurting our nonprofits, our affordable housing, our businesses, when we should really be helping them so that we can thrive together. So those are my comments. Thank you.
So I'll add my comments. First comment is I'm going to apologize to the Water Commission because I'm going to support the recommendation tonight. I think it should have gone through the Water Commission, but that's a difference of opinion on governance. Before the meeting started, I detested this fee. I think the best example, not just the jobs that we lose, but when a charter school moves, I don't, 800 yards and they get charged, what was the amount? Five figures? What, six figures?
$130,000.
$130,000. I mean, I can't support that. It's bad government, and I'll be proud to support this recommendation. So I'm open to a motion. Mr. Halter, the honors?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to, one, thank my colleagues and especially thank staff who's had to navigate us for the last several years through this. I want to mention this, is that one of the questions was, why did it take so long to get here? Honestly, it's all about getting to know our colleagues, getting to know the true facts, getting to know the direction and all the intricate and complicated details, and knowing when you think you have the votes to make something like this happen. So I really look forward to making this motion to support mine and Councilmember Johnson's policy consideration to immediately end net zero and put a moratorium on it, get rid of it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have one final question I can. So how do we, from a water standpoint, from a legal standpoint, if somebody had to pay in April their net zero fee, how do we handle that? Are they going to ask for reimbursement, or is it just, we're changing the policy now on a go-forward basis?
Yeah, I think, what is this, if it's, maybe starting in the month, July 1, moving forward, putting a date on it? I think at some point, you know, honestly, I think that it's tonight. I mean, if we pass this tonight, this is the effective date. I think I would be saying to myself, why did I go through and pull that permit? And I could keep kicking myself, because that's tuition, that's a lot of things, you know, for a business owner. So if there was a way to consider some type of proration or some type or consideration, I'm open, no, Mr. Mayor, hey, I'm playing with this. Help me out. Maybe anything, do this, anything within the last three months.
Just Dorrington, do you have?
I think Councilmember Johnson.
Excuse, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Johnson has.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if Councilmember Halter would amend his motion to include that when staff comes back to us with the official amendment to our ordinances, that they provide us some options on that?
I'd be happy to amend it that way. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Is staff clear on that interpretation?
I have two questions on options. Is it options for the effective date or options on whether we'd be retroactive in the application? If it's just the effective date, that's clear.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it's, you know, we'd have the immediate moratorium now. I believe that would require a supermajority of the council. Not sure. The effective date would be when council officially adopts an amendment to the ordinances that would remove that language. But I was suggesting that Councilmember Halter consider an extra point, which would be to direct staff to come back with options on if there's any retroactivity. I'm uncomfortable with it, because, you know, where do you draw the line? There's always going to be a line. And, you know, I think we do what we can going forward, but I don't want somebody who, you know, paid it 91 days ago to say that 90 days wasn't the appropriate cutoff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. That would be my recommendation. The policy has been valid until today, and so that just today be the date and there not be any retroactivity. But if council likes, we can come up with some options. My other question, I understand the primary concern is the fee. The ordinance includes water rights dedication. It would be my recommendation, I believe the water department's recommendation, to keep that portion of the policy. And I don't think there's been any complaints from the public. I don't think that's an issue, the water rights dedication aspect. So I'm planning when we come back to council to maintain the dedication requirement, but if council feels differently, please let me know.
Councilmember Halter, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson?
And if I may, Mr. Hogan, you know, I'm fine with keeping the water rights dedication portion, but to the contrary, we have had businesses that refuse to operate in Ventura because of the water rights dedication, and some of them may choose to speak when we come to that portion. But that was not the intention tonight. Thank you.
So are we clear on the motion? Mr. City Clerk?
If I could ask the city attorney to repeat the motion, please.
Just, Councilmember Johnson, did you still want the staff options for retroactivity? Are you dropping that portion?
I am not the maker of the secondary of the motion. You're going to need a clear restatement of the motion, and you're going to need the secondary, Councilmember Campos, to sign off on it.
So the motion on the table is just to adopt the recommendation as presented and the policy consideration, with today being the effective date of July 16?
That's how I see it. Thank you.
And I seconded that motion.
Okay. We're ready for a vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the motion, Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
And Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, on to public communications. Mr. City Clerk, how many cards do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We currently have 14 speakers for general public comment. And I just make a call for all speaker cards to be submitted on public communications We've got 15 speakers.
City Council, what's your, we've got 15 speakers. We normally allow 30 minutes for public comments at the end.
Do we need a motion to take another item?
We need a motion to...
I wouldn't think for public comment, but I'll defer to the city attorney.
That is correct. You don't need a motion for just hearing a general public comment.
But I do need, I do need some approval to, do we want to go?
30 minutes.
To 30 minutes, which would give two minutes to each speaker?
30 minutes.
Is the city council good with that?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay, that's what we'll do. Two minutes for the 15 speakers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Adrian Coulter, followed by Brian Kane, followed by David Schechter, followed by Jenny Hansen. Speakers, feel free to line up right along here against the wall.
There's a group of election deniers who intend to go to every meeting of elected officials in the county to sow unfounded distrust in our elections and to promote racist voter suppression by reading a bizarre manifesto of pseudo-technical and legal gibberish by a nationwide group, United Sovereign Americans. This group has sworn to sue our state to paralyze our elections. We saw the effect of election deniers in Washington, DC in 2020, with seven states creating false assertions. We saw the effect of election deniers and the violent insurrection that followed. We see the effect of election deniers in Washoe County in Nevada, where a Republican county commissioner, who actually won her race by a large measure, is afraid to actually certify her own win. Now, willing dupes are bringing this chaos closer to home with false messaging of massive voter fraud and rules that would disenfranchise our neighbors. It's not an accident that they keep referring to Section 2 of the 14th Amendment. That's the one where only white men over the age of 21 were allowed to vote. Election denial poses an ongoing threat to U.S. democracy. Experienced election personnel are being frightened by interleaving their jobs. Both voters and legislators are being intimidated. New York's Attorney General Letitia James warned the New York citizens... New York's Attorney General Letitia James warned the New York Citizens Audit Civic Fund, the predecessor of United Sovereign Americans, that their aggressive door-to-door canvassing put them in danger of violating the Federal Voting Rights Act and Section 2 of the Ku Klux Klan Act. It's their right to present this un-American agenda as our First Amendment guarantees free speech. However, it is your responsibility, as elected officials, to prevent this danger from spreading like cancer any further. Thank you.
Brian Kane, David Schechter, Jenny Hansen, Cindy Godinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Brian Kane. I live in Ventura County and I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 35 years. I spent my career building satellites, but we won't go into that today. I am a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson of, of that group. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in 20 states or more. Today, my colleagues and I come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear: they don't add up. We are here to educate and inform both you and the public that USA's audit of the certified 2022 election using only official data provided by state elections officials shows that the votes cast and counted were not all valid and accurate under the Constitution and the law. We do not cast blame or aspersions on anyone. We do not suggest the wrong candidate in any race was declared the winner, nor do we advocate for overturning any past elections. Tonight, we will present to you a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings. And we ask that you review our resolution and adopt a vote in your upcoming agenda for the next meeting to sign this USA resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Hansen, Cindy Godinez, Julianne Case.
My name is David Schechter. I live in Ventura County. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election, whereas it's a recognized civil right in the U.S. for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "And the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of this franchise," end quote, whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote, whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Whereas, open source audit of the California 2022 general election conducted by California citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2.7 million votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. My time is nearing the end, but certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance?
Thank you.
Appears to have been fraudulent?
Thank you.
And illegal.
Jenny Hansen, whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio, United States versus Threp Morton, 1878. Whereas, California 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen. By us, the American people resulting in incalculable, incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of the United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and to, and to the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attentation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review. Three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features, et cetera. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructures. Five, adjudication must be signed off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Cindy. I've lived in Ventura County for 49 years. Six, regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from vote to vote count to final canvas, including audible and witness transfer for paper ballot records, sorry. Seven, the National Institute of Standardized Technology compliant randomized statistical valid end-to-end audits with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to 14th Amendment Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not the personnel from the election systems. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified vote count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, the total number of unique variants above is more than 10%. The margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for the candidates affected unless the issue is provable. And nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can be guaranteed and intended for the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that Ventura City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, California State Legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutor judges?
Thank you.
Okay. And?
Thank you. Julianne Case, followed by Steve Taunton, Deborah Baber.
To continue, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrar of voters to cooperate and fulfill this firm request of the people. My name is Julianne Case, living in Ventura for over 40 years. What you heard tonight is a culmination of thousands of hours of, of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams, data teams from California and across the country. It's a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registrations through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in California, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. We can all agree this is, we wish this were not the case. But the official data shows these concerns are valid and the law says resolving them is essential to securing our liberty. How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, and the self-esteem of our children and young people? And how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting for each other, to keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda at the next city council meeting and where you can vote to join us in a support of fair, honest, and valid elections. Our website showcases initiatives. Please check it out at unite, the number four, freedom.com. I say it again, uniteforfreedom.com. I encourage you to check it out. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Steve Taunton, Deborah Baber, Marco Cuevas.
Hello, my name is Steve Taunton. I am the Ventura Coordinator for the United Sovereign Americans. And just to give you a little background of what we did is we asked for the different states voter rolls. And through the voter rolls, we went ahead and did queries on them, say, okay, who's living at a post office box? Who's over 100 years old? And we've also done canvassing to look and determined that, as David said, 5.8 million people who voted or were registered to vote got a ballot. And through that, we realized is that the voter rolls are not accurate. And if the voter rolls aren't accurate, then how can the elections be accurate? And when we find in California, and this is using the, getting it from the Secretary of State, that 123,000 more votes were counted than cast, now we're questioning it. We're not election deniers. We're just wanting information from the state why the voter rolls are the way they are when we're doing mail-in ballots. We're mailing a ballot to everybody and yet our voter rolls aren't accurate. Well, then makes the elections inaccurate. That is what we're about and that is what we're talking about today. It's got nothing to do with past elections. We're talking about the voter rolls are inaccurate today. We've also given all the names of the people we think are not eligible voters. They may not be citizens. We have given it to, back to the Secretary of State and say, hey, here are the names that we have, over a million of them. Please respond and adjudicate this for us so we know as citizens that these people are citizens and where they live is in the state that they're voting in. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I know you can't do it because we're not an agenda item. Thank you.
Deborah Baber, Spencer Noren, then Marco Cuevas.
My name is Baber, long A. So I'm Deb Baber and I am running for State Assembly in District 38, which includes Ventura County. I want to talk about the lived experience, but first I want to frame it by this. I have helped run about 600 canvases where we have talked to voters. And I personally have knocked on doors where people who are residents there say, I have no idea who you're talking about. I've lived here for 15 years. I've lived here for five years. I've lived here for 20 years. I have no idea who that voter is that you're talking about. No, I've never seen a ballot come here for it. And yet those people continue to be on the rolls. So what's the lived experience? Our Secretary of State issued a statement recently about the attempted assassination of Donald Trump and the murder of an American citizen, in which she talked about our democracy. She is either ignorant or she is deceitful because we are an American republic. We are not a democracy. What happened? A day before the attempt to assassinate Donald Trump, a head donor of Donald, of Joe Biden's issued a statement that he wished he would be martyred. My lived experience is watching as Kathy Griffin held up a bloodied head of Donald Trump a few years ago. That's my lived experience. My lived experience today is of a woman who's a PhD over at Cal Lutheran, who wrote just on her social media, I hope next time they don't miss and really hope this isn't the last attempt too. I would love to do it myself, but I am too far away. This woman works at Cal State. She just wrote this on her, on her media. Here's my lived experience. My lived experience is Donald Trump was acquitted of absolutely everything that he was accused of. My lived experience is that this man, this man is one who sat in a closet and with the ghost light, gaslighted us. This is the man in the arena. This is the man in the arena. My lived experience tells me that election in 2020 was stolen. There's no question about it. I want to make sure that we have free, fair, and real elections in this county. Thank you.
Spencer Noren, followed by Marco Cuevas.
There might be only one person who can follow that, Mayor. You're looking at him. Michael, he did an awesome job. You know that, sir? I tell you that every time I come up here. I'm gonna take 10 seconds for Michael. You're my dude. Thank you. Appreciate your effort. Okay, public comment now. I've been thinking about things all week, as we know. Few topics, let's get after them. Safety in our community, number one. I missed the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if it was said, but I want to talk about the suicide prevention hotline, star 988. Our community unfortunately has had some loss lately. Star 988, if you're thinking about suicide. Number two is the projectile sniper that has been plaguing our community in the last 18 months, 24 months. City manager, if you could look into some discrepancy that's happening in the community right now. The police department released some evidence that said only one person has come forward to the police department, while on social media and through KTLA, there's been 12 victims. Can you please help me find out if it's been one or 12 and have the city communicate what a right number it is? Because if it's 12, I think we have a big concern. If it's one or two, I know you have it handled. Thank you, sir. Getting to more about Boise, not Boise, excuse me, Grants Pass, about the RV going on. We've got RVs across town. We did do a new RV ordinance a few months ago. Thank you, council. And I believe it was Councilmember McReynolds or Duran that talked about moving it forward to public parking lots in the city of Ventura and also public parks to provide more safety for our community. Please, can we look at moving forward to having oversized vehicles and recreational vehicles not parking in our city parking lots and not in our city parks? This is a problem up in the state of California. People are coming here. Our community members do not feel safe in parking lots and parks where people are hanging out in automobiles and oversized vehicles all day. Thank you.
Marco Cuevas, followed by Glenn Overly and Kathy Morgan.
You know, I also want to thank City Clerk Michael McDonald, but aside from that, the comments that I've heard just now are quite honestly disheartening. I should not have to speak on this topic tonight, but I feel compelled to counter what I just heard. The group you heard from wants to, quote, "Get rid of voting machines, ballot drop boxes, and regional voting centers." They want to bring back neighborhood precincts, polling places, paper ballots, hand counting, and voter residential identification. I interpret this to mean less choice, less accessibility, and a higher likelihood for error. By having voting be solely in person on one day and at a specific location, it would in fact do the exact opposite of what this group claims to stand for, which is voting accuracy. An accurate vote comes from having a higher number of eligible voters be able to participate. This means allowing people to vote over an expanded period of time as it is more convenient for them, be it by choice or by necessity due to having to be at work that day. Hand counting of paper ballots would also be contrary to the goal of having an accurate vote. Manual counting, I'd argue, would lead to a higher possibility of error. We have technology such as machines that can scan, that can do it more accurately and efficiently. We need to enhance our use of technology, not limit it. I welcome anyone from the group making these claims to show me the data, not just rhetoric. Quite honestly, for now, the proof isn't there. Quite honestly, it's a slap in the face to people working at the elections office, working and volunteering at the elections division. They have numerous checks in place, which you can look up online to learn more about transparency, especially on the day of the election. I appreciate that after I submit my ballot, there is tracking to know that it was received and counted. It's also a slap in the face to the voters of this county to imply that their vote is not legitimate. We need to continue placing our trust in the registrar of voters, Michelle Asensio, the process, and the people voting in this county. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Glenn Overly. Glenn, you should be able to unmute yourself. And our final speaker this evening will be Kathy Morgan.
Michael, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Hey, good for Marco and I'm happy that everybody recognized you, Michael. You're a great addition to this city, always have been. Hey, tonight, council pushed through the process to increase council compensation by providing medical ben- the process to increase council compensation by providing medical benefits to council with no vote by the citizens. I'm about to beat a dead horse, so I hope nobody from PETA is listening. What's interesting about this is the two people that...
Mr. Overly, this period of the public comment is only for items that are not listed on the agenda, in that you're discussing an item that was on the agenda for this evening. But you may continue on other topics.
The reason why I bring it up is because I'm going to talk about the ballot measure, and this leads up to the ballot measure. Would that be all right, Mr. Hogan?
Um, yes, you can speak about the ballot measure. That was not on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
So this is preset to that. So building up to that, the fact that compensation is now added, when the ballot measure is either approved or not approved, council members will either get additional money beyond what was voted on tonight, or they won't. If they don't get the additional money through the ballot measure, people like Councilmember McReynolds will not get the same compensation as everybody else. Mr. McReynolds will not use the medical insurance, and thus, he will be undercompensated compared to the other council members. So, I believe that council has made a mistake tonight, and that the compensation level for certain council members will be lower based upon what happens at the ballot box in November. That being said, the really, the reason why I was going to talk tonight was I told the city manager a couple weeks ago that I was appreciative for the new golf carts at the golf course. And my hat's off to Stacy and the Parks Direct, as they did a fantastic job selecting the golf carts, the color, and all the other things that go with it. So I'm appreciative of that. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is going to be Eileen Reimers, followed by Kathy Morgan. Eileen, you're on twice. I'm going to bring you over now to see if this one works. You should be able to unmute yourself. I'll bring both over. Eileen, you should be able to unmute yourself on whichever device you're using.
Can I?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Eileen. Oh, I have control.
We can still hear you.
Okay. My name is Eileen McHenry Reimer, and I'm elected Democratic Representative of County Supervisor District 1. I swear in open court and defend our rule of Constitution. I'm here to voice my objection and outrage at the unconstitutional and autocratic intent of United Sovereign Americans to destroy our democracy. They are working to first, press vote both in our counties and nationally, and second, to overturn valid elections if they lose the election on November 5. We are in civil war, or I do not know if it's a second civil war, or just a continuation of the war started in 1861. That civil war was fought with rifles and cannons, but this civil war is fought with word, with the truth on the side of democracy and lies and misinformation and outright gibberish to promote destruction of our voting rights. They promote resolutions such as this fancy-looking piece of paper, which they brought tonight, full of lies and misinformation, designed to confuse and make voters afraid the votes not be counted. This is a battle between autocracy and democracy, how we, the people, have the most powerful weapon involved to vote. Finally, they want to get you, our elected officials, to violate plural problems by signing onto their gibberish-filled resolution. They are promoting the civil war in the autocracy of slavery and the democracy of our constitutional republic, the we, the people. Please do not be fooled by this. They want to disenfranchise people who they don't want to vote, and they want to overturn the election.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Eileen.
Okay.
Our final speaker this evening is Kathy Morgan. And Kathy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yes, my name is Kathy Morgan. I am a resident of Ventura and co-president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. The League of Women Voters at the local, state, and national levels believe that increased accessibility to the electoral process is integral to ensuring that every American can exercise their right to vote. Leagues across the United States work year-round to promote pro-voter reforms that both preserve our existing rights and provide flexibility for casting ballots in order to be inclusive of historically underserved communities. While we have made progress in expanding voter access, many people still face disproportionate challenges to participate in elections due to factors including health, age, race, and gender. Our democracy is strongest when every voice is heard, which is why we strongly advocate for measures to make voting more accessible. The Voters' Choice Act, which Ventura County has adopted, provides measures that make voting more accessible. This act was established by Senate Bill 450 in 2016 and allows counties to conduct elections under a model which provides greater flexibility and convenience for voters. This election model allows voters to choose how, when, and where to cast their ballots by mailing every voter a ballot, expanding in-person early voting, allowing voters to cast a ballot at any vote center within their county, and providing secure drop-off locations throughout the county. I support our current voting system. It offers more options for voters and thus has increased voter participation. Multiple safeguards are in place to make sure that all eligible votes are counted and ineligible votes are not. Our Registrar of Voter has done her due diligence in making sure that Ventura County is in compliance with state law and best practices, and we owe her our thanks. Thank you for hearing me this evening.
That concludes general public comment.
We are adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of former city manager Ed McCombs. Our next meeting is August 20. Meeting adjourned.